Okay, it is six thirty. We are going to call our city council meeting to order. Welcome everyone here in person and of course, watching on TV or via social media. I'd like to start with the pledge and I will ask council member Garnica to lead us in the pledge.
Do I hand over your heart? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Clerk, let us have roll call.
Councilmember Brogi, here. Mayor Portem Mendez is absent. Mayor Viesenor?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Garnica?
Present.
Okay, wonderful. We have four out of five. And our next item on the agenda is the approval. I'll entertain a motion. Are any changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, our agenda is approved. Our next item on the agenda are presentations and we will start with an update from the United Water Conservation District. And so tonight, we do have a group here from the United Water. We have our general manager Mauricio Guardado, our water resources supervisor, Dr. Brahm Serku. I'm not sure if I pronounced that right, I'm sorry about that. Engineer Kailey Taniguchi. Okay, great. And Chief Financial Officer Brian Zahn. So, welcome.
Thank you. See if I get this teed up. Do I get the right one up here? Is it this one here? Okay, thank you. I didn't want to bring up some closed session items that probably shouldn't be there. Wouldn't be good.
Yeah, let's close, let's close the window on those.
Well, thank you again and good evening. Again, my name is Mauricio Guardado. I'm the general manager of United Water Conservation District and really excited for the invitation to present to you all this afternoon. And I think we've got a really nice presentation of what, you know, United's all about. Where, you know, some of our background, components of our operation, how they benefit the city of Fillmore. And I think even more importantly, you know, what are our plans for the future sustainability of our region? And we've really tried to take our operations seriously by taking that regional approach and engaging cities, the county, other agencies, and of course, the landowners and coming together and collectively, you know, bringing ideas, concepts to fruition. And I think we've done a good job of capturing that in our, in our water sustainability plan. And so, this is a kind of, obviously, you know, some of these familiar faces. It's our governing board. We're governed by seven elected members to the United Water Conservation District Board. And we have a service area of about three hundred and seventy-five square miles, going all the way from Lake Piru, the Los Pilates Mountains, all the way to the coast. And, you know, along the way, we have our, our lake, Lake Piru. We have diversion structures, recharge basins, wholesale operations. And in total, we serve approximately four hundred thousand people. We benefit from our operations and about a hundred thousand acres of agricultural support. So, it's a pretty vast operation. We've been here around now for almost a hundred years. You know, ninety-eight years so far, providing a beneficial use of this water resource to a vast region here in Ventura County. And so, we have kind of enough, you know, kind of that opening. We have some really, you know, high leveled experts that we brought with us today. Again, first one, our water resources supervisor, Dr. Brahm Serku, who will kind of again go over some of the operations, followed by Kaylee and Brian. We're here to answer any questions along the way, so feel free. And again, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you tonight.
Thank you so much. And also, I'm so sorry, I forgot to also add that Mr. Tony Emmer is here also with the United Conservation. Thank you.
So, once again, good evening, mayor and council members. I'll provide an update on the watershed conditions. Talk a little bit to set the stage on what United Water Conservation District does, where our facilities are, but then I'll focus more on Fillmore Basin and how our activities help replenish the groundwater here in the Fillmore Basin and give you an overview of that and a current status update. So, as you see on the screen now, the blue line shows the district outline, a little similar to the map you just saw, but it shows all seven groundwater basins and that are part of United Water Conservation District. So, to the east on the main stem, Santa Clara River, you see the Piru and Fillmore Basins. There in green is the Fillmore Basins where, where we are now. So, and then we also serve basins more downstream, including coastal basin like the Oxnard, sub-basin Pleasant Valley and Las Posas. So, all these basins have a little bit of different characteristics. But our mission, generally speaking, in short, is to maintain the health of the aquifers to enhance, you know, by enhancing recharge and reducing seawater intrusion. So, the recharges, as you will see in my presentation, by our conservation activities, we increase water levels, Piru, Fillmore, Santa Paula Basin. And then the seawater intrusion issue is more an issue along the coast where the ocean intersects with the land. Importantly, so we were lucky here locally in Ventura County to have all these groundwater basins. They're very productive groundwater basins. Most of the water use within the county here or this side, within the district, is actually from groundwater. It's not imported supplies or other sources. It's, it's from the ground. And that's why the replenishment is so important. And here on this graph, you see, for example, the agricultural use. That's the, the, the major user in the district. You see the number of one hundred forty-four thousand acre feet per year. So, that's district wide. That includes agriculture on the Oxnard Plain for irrigation. You know, the berries and the row crops, et cetera. And then more in the valley up here, it's more the trees and the orchards, citrus and avocados. But important part of our mission then, or the consequence of our mission, is to support agricultural, agriculture and, you know, the agricultural way of life here in the, in the county. But there's also municipal use, of course, including Fillmore, Santa Paula, Ventura, Oxnard. And I also want to mention Port Huaynimi and the Navy Base near the coast, which also use the municipal water. So, what you'll see, forty thousand acre feet per year of groundwater. Remember the previous slides, one hundred forty-four thousand acre feet per year of groundwater for ag. So, ag uses more than three times the amount of water. It's just, that's just the water it uses. So, it just shows you the difference, how important, or it stresses the difference, how important ag is for our community. And also, I should say, feel free to interrupt me if there's any questions along the way or if I go too quickly or if you need any clarification. Again, I mentioned, we are lucky to have groundwater basins here and we're lucky that we have all that water supply here in the county and in our watershed. The Santa Clara River Watershed is where we are. It's a big watershed. I'll actually have another map, but you know, the Sespe, Piru Creek, all those big wilderness areas, it rains a lot there due to just the way the weather comes here. It squeezes out all of the rain before it goes more inland. And in the desert, they don't get the rain because we all get it. So, but because we have such a big watershed related to the use area, all that water ultimately flows down in the Santa Clara River and we have the opportunity to harvest that water for our use. Compared to other counties in Southern California, as you see on the map here, Los Angeles, Orange, San Diego, they use a lot of imported water from the state water project, from the Colorado River projects. You know, that's, that's complex, that costs a lot of money. We're lucky, we only use a fraction of what they use. United, we've been more aggressive in importing water when we can, when it's at a good, you know, cost ratio. It's beneficial for us to use it and we have been using it more often. But still, the water that falls from the sky is the free water and that's the most, the cheapest water and we're lucky to have a lot of it. So, here you see another map of the watersheds I'm just talking about in different colors. The different colors are the tributary areas of the subwatersheds. So, I'll use this map for a moment to kind of show what we do. So, in the east, it's not colored very well, but in the yellow subwatershed, you see Piru Watersheds. Let me see. Oh, you can kind of see the cursor here, so I'll move it around a little bit. So, this is Lake Piru here, Santa Felicia Dam, which is our facility. So, the function of this is to retain water in the winter time. So, when it rains in this whole yellow area, the water flows to our reservoir, Lake Piru. We retain that water and then later in the season, we can release that water to benefit the downstream users. So, and the downstream users, we release it to Piru Creek. Then it goes into the main stem, a lot of recharge to Piru, Fillmore Basins. So, that's one of the main activities is we do release that water from our reservoir. It recharges the groundwater in these basins, but not all of the water gets recharged here. Then it, it flows past, past you all and then at the Freeman Divergence in Saticoy, we divert the remainder of the water from the river and then put it in our facilities near the coast. I do want to mention, you're probably aware, Pyramid Dam is upstream of Lake Piru. That's a state water project facility from the Department of Water Resources. They don't store the natural flows in the watershed. So, any water that comes in, they pass through because that belongs to the users here in the county. That's not part of the state water project. But it gives us access to the state water project. So, if you want to order, we have a state water project allocation. If you want to order some of that water, we can order it through Pyramids and then they can release it when we ask for it. It flows down the creek and then it goes into our reservoir and then we can release it, well, you know, when the time is best to benefit the downstream water users. I do want to mention, or let me first talk about the Freeman Divergence, actually. So, we do the releases, but also outside that release period, which is generally September, October. In the winter time, when the rains, we harvest the rain that falls on the green area here. So, way east of us, Santa Clara, Santa Clarida area, there's some runoff, but generally, there's less rain over there. The most productive area really is the Sespe Watershed, which is here in the western side of the watershed. So, all the water that falls in the green area, it also naturally replenishes the Piru, Fillmore Basins, just in the stream channel, but a lot of it flows past, obviously, reaches the Freeman Divergence. And again, that's a twelve-hundred or fourteen-hundred foot wide structure crossing the Santa Clara River near Saticoy and it allows us to divert the water, put it in a pipeline. This is the area you see here in green. Most of the water we divert goes underground. So, similar to what's happening in, in your area here, we actually have recharge facilities that enhance the recharge. So, we spread it in large basins. We have several hundred acres of basins to help nature and recharge more water. And that water then gets retained in the basins. Let me see, yeah. And ultimately spreads to recharge all the basins here near the coast. We also have those pipelines here. So, if there is demand, that serves agricultural customers is the dark green one. So, when, of course, in the January, when it rains a lot, there's not a whole of demand for water on the Oxnard Plain because it's already raining. So, you know, farmers don't need to purchase additional water. But later in the year, where there's still water in the river and the weather, you know, warms up or the rain ends, we can send surface water straight from here to the users there. And the need, the reason really is because of the seawater intrusion we have from the coasts. If we can deliver that water closer to the coast, that's more efficient than recharging it closer to our Freeman Divergence. So, as we, we try to do that as much as we can, surface deliveries. But in the end, the demand is what it is. We divert lots of water. So, most of the water in the end goes in, in the, to the groundwater. I do want to mention the yellow line. That's the drinking water that we supply as a wholesaler. So, we also pump water, treat it and then provide it as drinking water to the city of Oxnard, Port Huaynimi and the Navy Base and some small water mutuals.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Of course.
On this topic. So, I know you mentioned there's several other basins in the county. So, there was like sort of the Camarillo one. So, is, let's see. Do those, here we are. Yeah, we got the Las Posas Valley Basin and the, I guess Pleasant Valley. You know, being that the hills around there, you know, they're not getting what like the Los Padres National Forest and the storms. So, is the, is the water that comes from them really not as significant as the ones that you were just talking about? Or, you know, what comes from that, from those, do those also feed out to the, to the Oxnard Basin?
Yeah, so like, for example, the basins here, Piru, Fillmore, that goes downstream and then we divert it, but it's still the overall direction of the flow is towards the ocean. We spread a lot of water here, where I circle, we do elevate the water levels pretty significantly. You know, I couldn't go up the groundwater by a hundred twenty feet. Like in twenty twenty-three, the groundwater went up a hundred twenty feet in, in four months or so because there is so much water. So, at that point, the water spreads all directions or at least south and east. So, it does reach a little bit the Las Posas Valley Basin too. But predominantly, you know, it goes the other way around. Yeah. Oh, sorry. Let's see. So, what I do want to mention also is Pyramid. So, Pyramid Lake is also a DWR facility, state water project. But, you know, they impound the relatively large watershed too. And not, not everybody knows this, but we have the rights, all the downstream waters, including you, have a right to that water. So, similar as in Pyramid, and Pyramid, DWR cannot hold back that water and use it in the state water projects. They only use water imported from up north. So, but we manage this project where as the coordinator for the downstream water users, we tell DWR to hold back that water when it rains sufficiently. Then they hold it for us and they release it at a later date. It's a little bit more constraints in the operations because we have to work with what the state water project does. So, we're not as flexible as with our own facility here and the reservoir. But still, it has a great benefit and it's very cheap water also. And we have a longstanding agreement with DWR so that, and they're really good working with us. So, we have the benefit definitely of that reservoir also has some storage capacity and it gets released. Most of that water recharges in Piru Basin, but as I'll show later, whatever happens in Piru Basin affects Fillmore Basin too. That water just flows downstream, either underground or above ground near the fish hatchery there and then it reaches the Fillmore Basin. So, whatever happens in Piru is, is very relevant for Fillmore also. This is just two pictures. If we do a conservation release, we monitor the watershed. You know, for those of you who know the watershed and the river well, it often looks like the picture below here. You know, in between rainstorms. But even in the summer, or like say in September, if we do a release, it could look like this. So, this is really our operations that can suddenly the river starts flowing. And, you know, as we will probably do it later this year in September, October, you might see the river, the river be like this. And if you wonder where the water's coming from, that's from Lake Piru. That's our conservation release that benefits downstream, including the Fillmore Basin. I just have three charts here just to show real quick our operations. Generally, it shows a timeline, in this case, from nineteen ninety-eight to twenty twenty-four, showing the importance of the flood flow releases from Castaic, so that DWR facility. And the message is somewhat equal for all of those is that we're, more recently, we've increasingly tried to take advantage of all the water supply that we can, being more aggressive, coordinate more with other agencies to get as much water as we can. And that you could see here in the chart. You know, we get up to ten thousand acre feet per year of that water, which is really good. Most of it goes to Piru Basin. Then there's a drought, we didn't get a whole lot of water. And then twenty twenty-three, a record year in many aspects, and we got the record demands of water. So, almost sixty thousand acre feet, that's unheard of. That's a lot of water. That, that's worth a lot of money. So, a lot of that percolated in Piru Basin, a lot of that made it to downstream at our facility. But you see the, the upward trend. That's what we're aiming for. The conservation releases, what I mentioned early, that's not from Castaic, that's from Lake Piru. Again, just want to show you, it fluctuates based on how wet it is. On average, we do about twenty-five thousand acre feet per year during a drought. You see twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, not that much, and then it picks back up. So, it's highly variable depending on how much rainfall there is. State water project importation. So, the state water project in a nutshell, this is the facilities. It imports water from the Upper Feder River Watershed near Oroville. It brings it hundreds of miles down via the San Luis Reservoir, California Aqueducts. And this is where we are, Pyramid Lake. So, we have the connection here, then it gets released into Lake Piru. How did that look? Okay, there it is. We've been doing this program since nineteen ninety-one. So, you see, in the early days, we didn't import that much water. We have a state water project allocation of three thousand one hundred fifty, so which is about here, acre feet per year. Normally, that's where we max out, but more recently, especially since twenty seventeen, we've gone above and beyond trying to import more water, especially when it's not too expensive. This includes Article twenty-one water, which is water that's only available when it's really wet. Then DWR calls you and say, can you take the water? We have excess water, otherwise it's going to the ocean and you have to decide right away. So, you have to be flexible and being able to take it. But with some planning, we've been able to take advantage of it in twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three. And we've also done additional agreements above and beyond what we've done in the past, transfers with other agencies, be it Santa, Santa Clarida Water Agency or Palmdale or any other state water contractor, we're increasingly trying to do transfers. So, we have, you know, agreements where we can take the water when they don't need it and, and which benefits the region. I'll talk just a little bit about the Freeman Divergence. I know it's downstream from where we are, but I think it's still good that you know what's going on there. And, you know, I should remind you, all the basins from Piru, Fillmore, Santa Paula, the Oxnard Basin for the Department of Water Resources, that's all considered the Santa Clara River Valley Basins. So, it's considered one basin and Piru, Fillmore is a sub-basin. So, that's, they're all interconnected. So, what happens at the Freeman Divergence, the water, the groundwater conditions downstream are, are somewhat relevant to you also. So, this is our facility looking upstream. This is near Saticoy, Todd Jail is just somewhere here on the, on the west. So, you can see the facility spanning the river here. This is when there's lots of water in the river, obviously. That's how it looks, very, lots of sediment there. But here, we're diverting at our maximum capacity. Here we have a gate and we can take the water here, but we only, you know, during periods like this, we only divert a fraction of the river. It's like they put numbers on it, three hundred seventy-five CFS. There's, there's thousands or ten thousands of CFS in the river. So, that's all we can take, a little bit. So, a lot of times, we only take a little bit of the river. Just want to make, make sure that's clear. And again, a time series since nineteen ninety-one, that's when we built this facility. Before nineteen ninety-one, we diverted water also. It was an earthen berm and it gets washed out. And this is a more stable operation. For various reasons, we, we built this in the early nineties. But you can see the trends also. Wet weather nineteen eighty-five to two thousand fifteen or twelve was actually one of the weirdest periods we've seen here locally. So, we've been very spoiled, but then drought period hits and that's where we are now. Twenty twenty-three, and I like to say this, but I've said it over and over again, but this was a record year. We've never diverted that much in one calendar year, so almost a hundred fifty thousand acre feet. Twenty twenty-four, really good year also. Twenty twenty-five, well, it's almost done. You would say, you know, the rainfall for the year has ended arguably. Maybe we get, you know, a little bit of rain this summer, but we know we're planning a conservation at least. So, we diverted approximately, say forty thousand. We know we'll get probably twenty or thirty thousand acre feet more depending on how much state water we can import. So, we could see, you know, these last three years have been really favorable. And sixty thousand acre feet is about the average we get, long-term average. So, you know, it could be twice as much during a wet year. Could be as low as ten thousand or five thousand during a really dry year. Twenty twenty-three also, we diverted in one year the same amount than what we diverted in the previous ten years. So, the message here for us is always be ready. We always do a, a poll at work to say, okay, how much is it going to rain? And it ranges from two inches to fifty inches every year. You don't know. You know, I'm a hydrologist. I have never won, so. It's hard to say really, you know, months out what the season will be. So, and that's what I want to say. You really have to be ready because suddenly it starts raining like in twenty twenty-three, January, and it rained for three months. And that's when we got all that water and nobody saw it coming really. So, what, what do we have in store for the rest of the year or the water year? So, here you see Lake Piru, which is full. That was in twenty twenty-three because you see our spillway here and the water's flowing over the spillway. You see here the, the water going over the spillway here. Because here is our normal outlet works when the lake is lower. But here it's full and spilling over. So, this is the water level or the storage, how much water, water is stored in our reservoir. Twenty twenty-three, it was full and then we released it, you know, and then it was less than half full. Then twenty twenty-four, almost full, we released it, October. And then twenty twenty-five, we didn't get that much rain. So, that, this is where we are right now. So, that's what we're planning. This is not exact. At this point, we, we haven't, you know, fully scheduled it, but most likely we'll release some, draw the level down, you know, to its minimum pool more or less because it's better to leave the water, or to, to release the water, put it in the groundwater basins than to leave it in the reservoir for a more, a water resources perspective. So, if we can, we'll release it and hopefully twenty twenty-six brings us a little bit of rain so we can, you know, bring those levels up. And we will, we're planning to acquire a state water project water this year too, but I don't need to go into the details. So, I want to move to Fillmore Basin, a little bit more specifically to where we are. The first thing I want to mention is there's a lot of pumping in Fillmore Basin. I don't know if you know, but Fillmore Basin is ranked number three in the state of most groundwater extraction per area. So, you know, the density of pumping is really high here. So, that's why it's really important. You know, it's good. It's very productive basin. It goes down and then goes up again because natural groundwater replenishment and because of United's activities. But it's important to realize how much is being pumped and how much the, the area relies on groundwater pumping and the replenishment activities. And this is pretty consistent. This is a report that just came out in twenty-five, but the basin has been in the top ten on prior years also. This is somewhat similar to what I showed you before, but now I will show exactly how much benefits the Piru and Fillmore Basins from our conservation releases. Because, you know, if we talk about the Freeman Divergence, that doesn't directly impact you. So, I'd rather talk about the conservation releases since nineteen ninety-one in this case. So, the total releases, again, ten thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand. The green portion is what during a release, we go out in the river and we measure how much is going, you know, how much is soaking in the grounds. So, that's the amount that directly goes to Fillmore Basin. So, it's on the order of thousands of acre feet per year when we do a release, up to ten thousand. Most of it actually goes to Piru Basin, just upstream here. That's just because the river channel is more conducive to recharge and Piru Basin, the, the groundwater elevation are lower. There's just more storage space in that basin. So, it fills up upstream of us. But again, that will also affect you as I'll show in a, in a later slide. But I want to be even a little bit more specific. This is a sketch or a diagram of the river going from upstream to downstream. This is one of the monitoring wells, you know, that we use to look at the groundwater elevations from the water reclamation plant here. And this is the city's Fillmore, the city's well number nine. I think we got some data from the city to look at the groundwater elevations. This is one that worked really well. And what I want to show is how these two wells, you know, in the river channel and the city well respond to our conservation release. Just one example or a couple of examples from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty releases. So, if you look at this chart from twenty eighteen, the orange one, orange line, shows the groundwater elevation near the river. You see twenty eighteen was pretty dry. We start somewhat low, elevation three seventy-five. It goes up a little bit. It goes up a little bit. Actually, it went lower than we could measure. And then it went up again in 2019, which was a pretty decent year. So we see here January, February, March, April. And then usually in the summer, the water levels go down. But the green area shows the period during which United did the conservation lease from Lake Piru. You see the orange line near the river jumps up, you know, seven, eight feet right away and then maxes out here. And then stays kind of high. And then 2020, 2021, it goes down a little bit. And then we do another release and then it fills up again. It doesn't go higher. This is kind of the maximum for this area. The basin is full. But you can see near the river really clearly a pattern, we do a release, it jumps up. So I want to show you your city well. It's the blue line here, similar patterns initially, and then it starts raining. It's almost full here. Here we're on a declining trend from April 2019. It goes down. If it weren't for our release, it would have gone down and continued that way. So the direct relationship between our conservation release and the city well is not you see the water go up, but it's declining and it stays flat. So in the end, it's a direct proof that our releases affect your city well. And then you see 2020, again, a pretty big release also. The city well was on a declining trend. We do the release and then it levels out. And then it's waiting until it fills up or keeps declining for the next water year. So it was really nice, I think, seeing those data. We, you know, we looked this up for this presentation that we could really demonstrate clearly, you know, how beneficial our operations are, you know, for the basin and also particularly for the city wells. And then last couple of slides, I believe, but just big picture. What's the groundwater doing now? What's the status? Pyro-Fillmore basins. This is a long-term trend. We've been capturing data since 1928, like what you're saying, almost 100 years. It goes up and down. This is where we are now. So 620 feet is pretty much full. We were there, now it's slowly declining. And, you know, we'll see what happens next. It will go up a little bit after we do our release. And I'll just scroll through those. That's another one in Pyru and then in Fillmore, you know, more closer to Sespe Creek and then more closer to the river. One interesting thing is you see in Fillmore, see how flat this is when it's full? This is pretty flat. If you look at, say, Pyru, it goes up and down more. So and that is because in Pyru, when the water levels go down, it flows to Fillmore and Fillmore stays full. And only when Pyru goes low enough, it starts declining in Fillmore. So that's the interconnectivity of the basins. If we recharge Pyru, in the end, you know, that helps Fillmore also. And that's what's shown on my last slide here, I believe, is a cross-section of the basins. If you look longitudinally, say, from Pyru, this is Pyru Creek coming in. And then this is just the river going down through the city of Fillmore and to Santa Paula, some of the tributaries, Sespe and Harper and Paul. This is the transect of the groundwater elevations. The black line is 2016 when it was pretty low. You know, the vertical is pretty exaggerated, but it's just, you know, to show you. So when it fills up with lighter blue and then the darker blue line, when the water level in Pyru start going that high, it just flows underground. And this is near the Fillmore Fish Hatch City. And even if it's high enough, it surfaces. And, you know, it looks something like this. It surfaces, it's really clear water, you know, and that's groundwater. And then it recharges here and it disappears again and it recharges the Fillmore Basin. So again, I just want to stress that how connected the basins are. We do a lot of monitoring. We can demonstrate it with data and the pattern's really clear. And I think that's all I had related to an update on water resources and what we do and how it benefits the Fillmore Basin. If there's any questions, I'm glad to take them. Otherwise, I'm handing it over to Kaylee.
Okay, thank you so much. So much information. Thank you for all of this data. I'm gonna, like, this is what I'm gonna like definitely put and save and be able to refer to because, you know, it's interesting and it really shows the importance of the water that we have. So thank you for it.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think the other thing, if I could just really quick comment, I, the other thing that it really shows is how important it is that the thinking that went into this back in the 50s when they put in the dam, the 40s and 50s in order to plan ahead, right? And without that, how much more variability there would be for the farmers and for the cities? And I think, you know, your charts definitely showed that. At least that's what I took out of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ceru. Does anyone have any more questions? Yes. Sorry, Kaylee, just turn on your mic. Thanks.
Quick question. With regard to all the development that's going on between here and Santa Clarita, do you see, how's that going to impact the underground water flow and the water coming out of Castake to Pyru down the road? I mean, from the LA County line and eventually I think probably even come in this direction, it's going to be developed. And so what's the impact on that? Can you envision?
Maybe somebody can help me, but I know, you know, for some part of the developments up there, they need to show that they have the water source and they'll have a new water supplier there, right?
Yeah, and that's baffled me since they started developing that area. Do they have the water supply? That's kind of the million dollar question. And I'm assuming they do, but I've never heard definitively that it's there or that it will be there. Yeah.
In that area, I'm not too sure what the water supply is. And then here in the Pyru or Fillmore basins, that'd be, you know, part of the GSA. GSA is to determine how much can be used. And if it's an issue, it has to be looked at. But, you know, the amount of development versus what's already being pumped, you know, like I showed agriculture, it's, there's a lot of extractions here in the basin. I'm not sure how that compares. Maybe it's not all that much because there's already a lot of pumping going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, does one more question, Dr. Ceru? Regarding that on the pumping, and that was an interesting statistic about are these basins being third in terms of groundwater pumping in the state compared to, I think this is Chowchilla and Madera there in the Central Valley? So I remember seeing a photo one time of, I think it was a farmer next to this big pole and it was saying, you know, the groundwater, you know, used to be up, you know, our, no, our land used to be up here, right? So can you kind of explain? That one was very shocking to me. And so when I, when I heard that we're the third most groundwater pumping in the state and that photo came from the Central Valley, we're also the highest pumping is, what, what does that effect have on, you know, do we have, you know, land coming down?
Subsidance issues here.
That's for the subsidence.
Because in the Central Valley and some areas, the groundwater has been chronically lowered and it's just lower than it's ever been and it doesn't recover. Here, like I showed the charts, it goes up and down. But in the end, you know, now recently, the basin's full. You can't push more water into it. So what, that's a nice thing about these basins. You can consider them as, as a natural storage reservoirs. They, you draw them down, it doesn't rain, but there's not that many negative effects, you know, unless you go really low. But we don't see that very often here. And then they fill up and they draw it down. And that's just a natural way of things. And, you know, we help nature a little bit, but we don't see those subsidence effects in the basins up here.
Right. That's really good news for us. Yes.
Maybe you can touch on, we got the call from USGS from their satellite images where
Some basins even.
The ground is actually elevated as a result of the water.
There was a map from the state and somebody, I was on a call with DWR and they're like, oh, can I ask you here in Ventura? Yeah, well, we saw the map of all the subsidence and, you know, areas of the Central Valley are colored red. And there's just a couple areas in blue. And is that where you are? Because it shows that because of all the groundwater recharge, the ground surface actually went up a little bit. So and that's what happened on the Oxnard Plain, yeah, because of our activities.
Because of the great activities. Oh, that's great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor and city council members. My name is Kaylee Taniguchi and I'm an engineer with United. And today I'm going to talk to you about the Santa Felicia Dam and the upcoming safety improvement project that we have. So we're going to start with a little bit of history. The Santa Felicia Dam was built in 1955 and it was the first reservoir in the state that was dedicated to groundwater recharge. It is critical water infrastructure. And Brahm went over the benefits and the reasons why this infrastructure is so important. But just as a recap, the recharge benefits all the downstream basins. It's a key structure in water management and seawater intrusion abatement. And it is an avenue for state water project imports. So the dam is regulated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, under a minor license for hydropower. So that means that it's rated for less than 1.4 megawatts. We're also regulated by California Division of Safety of Dams, or DSOD, under permit number 1005. And the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, or CALOES, reviews and approves our emergency action plan, or EAP. I know there's a lot of acronyms in here, but I'm going to try to make sure that I say them all out. And again, if you do have any questions as we go along, please feel free to interrupt me and let me know. So why is dam safety so important? We have had a catastrophic failure in this area before. The St. Francis Dam failed on March 12th in 1928, shortly after construction was completed. The failure released 36,180 acre feet of water down the San Francisco Canyon, 55 miles to the Pacific Ocean near Ventura. And this is a little bit less than half of the capacity, the current capacity of Lake Piru reservoir. So the failure killed 450 people and the city of Los Angeles paid more than $7 million in restitution to the victims' families and affected landowners. So these are some historical photos. I think they really paint a better picture than just saying words. The photo on the left, I'll use the mouse, I think you guys can see, is the city of Santa Paula the day after the flood wave came through. The building in the middle is Isbell Middle School, which still stands there today. The photo on the right is a telephone operator. Her name was Louise Skype and she called every single person in town, letting them know that the flood wave was coming. Her first call was to the two gentlemen depicted on the motorcycles. It was Laurent and Edwards and Stanley Baker. They were CHP Highway Patrolmen. They rode door to door and let everybody know that they needed to move to higher ground. So the photo in the middle on the bottom is what was left of the St. Francis Dam after its failure. So it was an enormous concrete structure that expanded the entire width of the canyon originally. And this failure actually led to the precursor of DSOD and the state's dam safety program. And it was a precursor to requiring engineers to be licensed in the state of California in order to work on critical infrastructure. So I would like to point out, the Santa Felicia Dam is very different than St. Francis Dam. Structurally, it's a completely different type of structure. And we do have a robust dam safety program, maintenance and inspection program. And we are required to have an emergency action plan, as I mentioned before, which does include inundation maps. And we do exercise that and update it annually. So this is an excerpt from our emergency action plan. And this is an inundation map or flood map of the city of Fillmore if Santa Felicia Dam were to fail. So now I do want to point out that this is the IDF case. That's the inflow design flood case, worst case scenario. It means all the rivers are full. It's been raining for days. The lakes and reservoirs are completely full. And then the dam fails. So the flood wave would reach the A Street Bridge in about one hour and 26 minutes. And you can see the photo on the right. This is the intersection of B Street and Highway 126 in Fillmore. At the peak of the flood wave, there would be about 10 to 12 feet of depth at that intersection. So this is a depiction of how high the water would be at the peak of the wave as it comes through. You can see the color code on the map. You know, it ranges from less than two feet to over 20 feet depth. So this is Santa Felicia Dam as it is today. Santa Felicia Dam is an earthen bankment dam. Said not a concrete structure like St. Francis. Over to the left, you can see the spillway structure. And I'm going to use the mouse again. In the middle of the, or in the reservoir, you can see the intake tower. And then there's a Pennstock pipe and a conduit that run all the way through the dam into the downstream control facility here. And if you look in the blow up, this is the pipe coming out of the dam. The building is the hydropower plant. And here are our releases into Lower Pyru Creek. So together, the intake tower, the pipe and conduit and the downstream control facility are what we call collectively the outlet works. So when you hear the outlet works project, we're talking about all three of those components. So the Santa Felicia Dam Safety Improvement Project will improve both sustainability and safety of the existing structure. We're planning on replacing the existing outlet works with a seismically robust structure and raising the elevation point on the intake to extend the service life of the outlet works an additional 50 years. That's for the outlet works. The other part of the safety improvement project is the spillway. So we're planning on increasing the spillway capacity to discharge the inflow design flood of 220,000 cubic feet per second. It is a lot. So for the outlet works, how we're going to accomplish this. Over on the west side, you can see all the existing infrastructure, which we discussed before. And what we are going to do is we're going to build an entirely new facility on the east side. So there will be a new sloped intake control facility with multiple ports. There will be two new conduits within a new tunnel that will go around the dam, not through the dam, which is no longer a standard of practice. And there will be a new downstream control facility to release back into Lower Pyru Creek. So at the end of the spillway project, which I'll show on a schedule later in the presentation, the existing outlet works facilities will be abandoned in place. So for the spillway, again, we're improving the spillway discharge capacity to pass the IDF of 220,000 CFS. And this is going to be accomplished by lowering the spillway chute and raising the dam crest by six and a half feet using a mechanically stabilized earth wall or an MSC wall. You can see in the schematic in the bottom right-hand corner or the bottom left-hand corner, excuse me, of how the crest raise will be incorporated into the existing structure. So one thing that I do want to point out is that even though the dam and its facilities are 70 years old, because of how well they were originally built and how well they've been maintained, for this spillway project, we are actually able to preserve the existing bridge, preserve the existing walls, and preserve the existing OG crest, which has been a huge benefit to the overall cost of the project. So this is a construction timeline that we're looking at. And I do want to caveat this slide that this is pending, all the environmental permitting being complete by the end of this calendar year. If that is the case, for the outlet works, we will bring on a contractor in 2026, next year. Groundbreaking construction would begin in 2027. And the completion of the outlet works construction would be in 2030. For the spillway, we would bring on a contractor in the beginning of 2030. And construction would be completed in 2033. You can see the abandonment of the existing outlet works happening after the completion of both portions of the project. So this is strictly a timeline for construction. The design has been in development for a long time. So design actually started around 2010. And we've been working on making sure that this project is reviewed by experts and that everything is going to work the way it's supposed to. So again, I mentioned that the previous slide was continued upon completion of the environmental permitting for the project. So the CEQA EIR, Section 106, 401 Water Quality Certification, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Biological Conference Opinion, and the National Marine Fisheries Service Biological Opinion have all been completed and/or received. What is currently still in progress is the final NEPA EA, the FERC License Amendment, the Section 404 permit. And we are planning on issuing an addendum to the CEQA later this year. So this brings us to the cost of the project. So the total cost is $352 million. This is $2025, so you may have seen different numbers before. This was a number that we received. It's the most up-to-date one we had. We received it a few weeks ago from our designer. This does include a 10% contingency for the outlet works and a 15% contingency for the spillway. So we have secured a low-cost EPA WIFI loan, the 4.4% over 37 years. And the master agreement was executed for $99.6 million in 2023. And the design loan agreement was closed for $13.5 million that same year. The construction loan agreement is pending with the amount to be decided. We're in discussions with the EPA regarding that. And at the bottom, we are going after all potential grant funding sources that we can. So we are currently working on the 2025 FEMA Hazard Mitigation Program. And that application is due September 15th. So we are planning on applying for grant funding for the outlet works construction. So we do reach out for letters of support for grant funding. We have found that letters from the public do make a difference in how FEMA looks at your application when they get it. We know it's going to be extremely competitive this year with all of the wildfires that had happened and the reduction in overall funding that's available. So we would greatly appreciate any support that the city could give. And with that, that concludes my presentation. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to take them.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. Does anyone have any questions for Kaylee?
I think I do, actually. Let me see here, I was just writing down some notes. You mentioned about how the wall and a lot of it is able to be preserved in lower costs. And I guess my question is, yes, preserved, but is there reinforcement or things that are needed of those things that are being preserved?
Yes, so that is correct. What we are planning for the spillway project is because the floor is being lowered, there's going to be a gap between the bottom of the wall, where the wall currently is, and where the new floor is. So the way the design has gone is that we're planning on putting like a cantilever, like a bevel in. And then they are reinforcing the floor with the existing wall and then reinforcing so that it's connected back and together, if that makes sense. So there is, I can get you many, many plans and a lot of details on that if you're interested, but that's the gist of it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? No, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Thank you, you guys.
All right, thank you.
Mayor's member of the council. I'd like to just give you a high overview of our '25-'26 budget. This was approved last June. If you have any questions or any detailed questions, because I'm going to go to a high level, feel free to ask them. Just stop me as I present the numbers here. When you really look high level, our entire budget, headcount, we added a headcount, we're only about 926,000 year-over-year, 9.5%. That's not a lot. It's really, the driver there is medical insurance and pensions. You look at our overhead costs, they're a little bit higher. They're about $2 million higher, but it's really because of consultants and legal fees. Our capital expenditures are actually lower. We've actually brought them down, $1.2 million. And our capital improvement projects are pretty much even year-over-year. So you see this, we're a little bit higher, about $1.7 million higher year-over-year. So that's not a significant amount. But people will often ask, well, then why did we have a rate increase? The difference is, as Kaylee mentioned, we had a low interest EPA loan. Well, we had $7 million that funded last year's activity. We don't have that this year. So this year, the funding of the Santa Felicia Dam needs to come from rates. That's why we'll be talking more about grants and things of that nature. That's really, really important when it comes to our projects and so forth. If you look at our projects, this is a list, we don't just look at one year. We tend to look five to 10 years in advance. This is a breakdown right now of what we're looking to spend over the next five to 10 years. Now, is it realistic that this is going to be put onto rates? You know, absolutely not. We're looking at loans, we're looking at bond issues, we're looking at grants, we're looking at appropriations, we're working in Sacramento and in DC. So there's a lot of things that are in the works that could help fund all of these projects. But without funding for those projects, you know, they come from, we'd have to turn to rates. But we'll look at that in a second here. Are we going to fund all of these projects through rates? Absolutely not, we can't. But any questions about our projects? So you see, it's going a steep incline, but $21 million this year. We're looking at 47. And then we start getting into the real construction, like the Santa Felicia Dam. So you look at 67,105 million, it increases pretty quick. So we're looking for funding opportunities to help take care of those. Groundwater extraction rates, so as I said, we did have an increase this year. It was about a 35% increase for Zone A. Zone A is our entire district. Certainly.
Okay, so what I noted on this slide was, okay, I took some notes from Kaylee's presentation. So it looks like the dam improvements is 352 million. But I'm also seeing here that FY '29 and '30 and beyond, if you look down at the Freeman Conveyance, no, I'm sorry, the one below that, Extraction Barrier, Brackish Water Treatment, is 384, I believe that's a million, right?
Yes, that's a million.
Okay, so just to give me a sense, so the 352 million for the Piru Dam, that's spread out over how many years?
That's going to be spread out between now and 2033.
Okay, so basically the next, you know, about eight years or so? 23, yeah, so 33, so yeah, so about eight years. And so, again, this one is in the next five years, we're going to be spending 448 million. Is that right?
That, but I believe in this one, it was the Extraction Barrier. We have a very good opportunity here for funding on that.
I think I remember.
I'm not that concerned. And one of the things about that, one thing I do want to point out here is about 50% of our projects are regulatory in nature, meaning we have to do them. The Extraction Barrier is not a mandatory project, so we have a little leeway there. But for instance, Santa Felicia Dam, the Freeman Diversion, these are things that we have to do. The regulators are saying, you have to do this work, you have to make these repairs. So we have to incur those costs.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
And one of the things that we do look at is we do look at where can we give and take? You know, for instance, this year, there was a lot of take because we realized we didn't have the funding that we expected or that we wanted. So some things to get pushed out a little bit. So we're a little bit sensitive about that, and we try to work with that. So when you look at rates, there was a rate increase. It was about a 35% for Zone A. When I say Zone A, that's what our entire district pays. That's what you would pay here. The other Zone B and so forth, those are further south. That's when you look kind of like our Freeman diversion down to the Oxnard Plain. So here in Fillmore, it went from $135 for agriculture to $182. I want to say that up here, you're probably paying the lowest cost for water. In Zone A for agriculture is $192, but if you go to Zone B, it's $323 an acre foot. And one thing I'd like to point out is, a lot of people like to think you're purchasing water from United. You're not purchasing water from United. You're paying an extraction fee for taking the water out of the ground. And then we take those fees, we do all the things that Brahman has talked about, to get the water back in the ground. So every time you pump, there's going to be water for you, and you're going to have that. So we're not really selling you water, I want to point that out. It's really an extraction fee for what you take out, so we can manage it and get the water back into the ground. Any questions?
I mean, I could probably do the math, but you might have this off the top of your head. Just what does that work out to per, let's say, 100 gallons of water?
I don't have that here.
Okay, anybody have any, just do the quick calc on it later. But my point would be that it's extremely cheap per 100 gallons.
If you're buying your Aquafina bottle at the gas station here, you're probably paying 10 times the amount that you're going to pay for more.
How many acre-feet? Less than half a penny, probably.
Yeah, that's good to understand.
That's a lot of bottles of water.
Right, okay.
Okay, so as we said, in a worse, we're looking 10 years in advance. We're trying to figure out how are we going to finance these projects? What projects are going to come on? What are we going to work on? So we do a lot of what-if scenarios. I'm going to show you a chart here. What if we didn't have any funding? What if we had to put everything on rates? This is what the rate structure would look like for Zone A here for agriculture. Now, do I think this is realistic? No, this is not something that the board would pass or something that we would pass along. But I just want to show the impact that our, or the projects that we're required to do will have on the rates here. But as Kaylee pointed out, we've spent a lot of time on grants. Right now, my chart here, it's a little bit backdated, it says 50 million. We actually have another 8 million. So we've done about $58 million in grants that we've received to fund our projects. We're working in Sacramento, we're working in DC to get appropriations. It's really our feeling that we can bring the cost down. You're not going, we're not going to put this on rates. And the next chart I want to show you here is this is where we think that we can actually get to. That green line there is where we think we can hold the rates when we get bonds, grants, appropriations, and so forth. So that will help pay for a lot of the infrastructure. What's most important here is, and Kaylee hit the nail on the head, is support. When we go up for a grant, we could be in a number-two position. But if we get enough support from the community, letters of support and things of that nature, it can actually bump us up into the first tier. I mean, we can take over that spot and be number one. So your letters and things of that, people say, what does a letter do? A letter does a lot. And even if we have to go to the legislature, sometimes we look for support and we'll reach out. If you can do that, it would be, it's a big benefit to us. But that's really a very high-level look at our budget. Anything else I can answer you about the cost of the district or anything else?
I do have a question, yes. And that is, on seeing that rate increase, right, for pumpers, 35%, is there anything that United Waters is doing with, particularly with the farmers and ranchers, about wells or doing improvements that allow for, I guess, more, what's the word? Can I say, getting, I don't know if it makes a difference to get, to improve well structure to make the most out of their water pumping. Is that more efficiency? That's the word I was looking for, sorry.
Because we don't own the wells, we don't really get involved with that. But there are grants out there, and we do encourage people when we hear grants come out, that there are grants to get your well retrofitted or get a new motor put on or something, so you can gain those efficiencies. I think Southern California, Edison sometimes offers something where you can get the benefits and, you know, you can reduce your electric costs and just be a little bit more efficient with it.
Okay, great, no, thank you for that. The resource conservation, great. That's good information, again, to pass on to those who might, you know, feel that rate increase. Okay, all right, any more questions? No, all right.
Well, I want to say thank you to everybody. I'm glad we had a chance to tell you a little bit about United and what we do for the district. I know when I started four years ago with the district, I thought I knew everything about what United was. And I started my first week and I realized I had no clue what we did. And most people don't know who United is. So I appreciate the opportunity about letting you know who we are, what we do, and how we're contributing to the community. And any questions, feel free to reach out to us. You've got our phone numbers. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And just to let you know, too, that we hear you on your requests for support and moving forward. And I think we probably have in our legislative platform and our policy platform, of course, you know, ensuring that our water supply here in Fillmore and our surrounding area is, you know, is taken care of. And so we will definitely check in with each other as a council and city manager.
Yeah, and I think the key for us is the letters of support will try to, will, I don't want to say assure, but help with the affordability factor. Because the reality is, okay, two things that I heard were, number one, these are mandated by regulatory agencies. They have to make the fixes. So the money's going to be spent. To me, the real crux of it is, who's going to pay that money? Because if we don't support it, then we're going to pay, guess what? We're going to end up paying it through our rates. If we do support it and we get the grants, then it's probably going to be the federal government or the state government helping us out with making that, you know, paying for these mandatory changes.
Well stated. Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. Okay, we have a second presentation, and that is here from the city of Fillmore on our geographic information systems, known also as GIS.
One second, mayor. Can we give a moment for a council member, Mendez, to join us?
Yes, I'm sorry, let's take, I'm sorry, we'll take a two-minute break. I think we'll restart in about 30 seconds, we do have a minute. Okay, thank you, everyone. I'll just repeat again, this is our second presentation, and it's from our city of Fillmore on our geographic information systems, our GIS system. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Jacob Cholker. I'm a planning technician with the Community Development Department. And I've been leading this project on GIS ever since last year. But yeah, I'm going to update you on what we've been doing last year, over the last year. And then I'll be providing a demonstration of our public viewer, which will be forthcoming to members of the public. All right, so for those of you who aren't aware, GIS is Geographic Information System. It's a computer-based system for geographic and geospatial data. It can be used to analyze, visualize, and map data and just assist with organizational decision-making. GIS is used by a multitude of organizations, but government is by far the most prolific user of GIS. Especially local governments and then, but every level of government. I just want to give you a brief timeline. April of last year is when city manager Erica Herrera took this before you for approval. There was two contracts, one for software and one for professional services. The professional services, the contract was awarded to Pro West and Associates. And the software was awarded to ESRI. And I just want to know, ESRI is probably the most prolific, it was one of the first entities to make GIS software, and they're very widely used. So there's quite a bit of interoperability that we can have since we use ESRI. And I think most of the governments here in Ventura County also use ESRI.
Is ESRI, is ESRI an acronym, or is that just the name of a company?
It started out as an acronym, but now it's just their name. I believe it's Environmental Science Research Institute. But yeah, now they just go, they just go by ESRI. And then in June, those contracts were signed. 500 hours were purchased initially, that was June of 2024. And that was purchased from Pro West. And that was really to get our GIS system off the ground. We did have existing GIS shapefiles from our consultant engineer, Dave Burkhart, for our water system. But other than that, we didn't really have much. So this was just to get us off the ground and support us as we move forward. By September of 2024, they had the initial overlays available for city staff to both review and start utilizing. We had 17 initial overlays that we had requested. Pretty much all of those are done. And then we also requested a bunch more along the way. And then fast forward to May of this year, council approved 160 additional hours from Pro West. All righty, and just a quick overview of what we've done so far. So the water systems that I mentioned, those have been mapped using the existing shapefiles. So the water, water distribution sewer, the reclaimed water system, and then the storm drain system. Those are all mapped and being used by our Public Works Department. And then our zoning districts were mapped. Those were mapped, and then they had to be created into GIS files to be able to be utilized. And then also our assessment, our special assessment districts for lighting and landscaping and storm drains. And then community facilities districts were also created into GIS files. The fire department, we created a weed abatement tool for them to use so they can pretty much drop pin on a map and send the letters out to the property owner. So they've been utilizing that. It's been great working with the fire department on that. And then all of our aerial imagery from, starting in 2007 and then going up till 2024 has been integrated. So we have quite a bit, it's about every two years that we should have done an aerial shoot of the city. So all of that is available. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. So our consultant has said that our aerial imagery is one of the most extensive that they've seen from a city our size. So we can pat ourselves on the back for that. And then the Cambria Community Services up near San Luis Obispo, they're using a weed abatement tool that's based on ours. abatement tool that's based on ours. So it shows you that Pro West, I believe, is their consultant as well. And then here in the city, we're also using GIS to help administer our homeless services grant that we received earlier this year. And then our finance director is using it to support our bond rating as she's going through that. All right, and then I just wanted to highlight a couple of things before I give you the demonstration. What you're looking at is from our lighting and landscaping overlay, those green areas are landscaped areas that the city is responsible for maintaining, and then the tree icon are street trees. And then the street lamp icons are surprisingly, street lamps. And each of those, when you click on it in the software, if you click on the street trees, it'll tell you the species of the tree, and then this different information, like when it was planted. And then for the street lamps, that information's straight from Southern California Edison. And it also has the different specs on those as well. The next slide, this is kind of an overlay of our storm drain system. We have the storm drain channels where they can drain, and then the orange are the pipes for where the stormwater goes when we get some rain. Finally, this snippet of our reclaimed water system, the dark purple is disposal areas. So if we have too much reclaimed water, and then the light purple is landscaped areas that actually are watered by reclaimed water. And then before we end the presentation, I just wanted to share with you a couple more GIS resources. SCAG, which is the Southern California Association of Governments, which Fillmore is a member of, they have a really interesting GIS platform. It's mostly transportation and census and different kind of economic data that they have on their system. So if you're interested in that, like me, because I'm a nerd, you know, you're more than willing, more than welcome to go look at that. And then finally, we have the county view with Ventura County. That's super useful for all sorts of stuff that's county-specific. But yeah, I'll, I can take some questions, and then we can go in the demonstration. That's okay.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Great presentation. Does anyone have any questions right now? Yes, John?
So just out of curiosity, so the areas, obviously, that the city's responsible for, you've covered a lot of them, you know, the water system, sewage system, trees, parks. So two areas that I've not heard about that maybe you could, maybe, maybe you're going to go into, I don't know. So one is safety, public safety, so fire and police, so services, how they might use this. And then the other one is also related to public works, streets, for example, you know, where are there potholes would be the, the popular one for a lot of people is identifying the potholes and getting those fixed. Is that something that we could do as well?
Yeah, as far as police and fire, I believe most police departments have a GIS system where they will use it to track crime statistics. Unfortunately, I don't work too closely with the police department, but that's my understanding that they use it for. And crime statistics, too, can be traffic collisions and things like that. And then as far as the fire safety, one element of that is we do have the CAL FIRE hazard maps that's integrated into our GIS that's straight from the state. And property owners will be able to click on their property and see if it's within that high fire zone. And then for the pothole manager, we did create a GIS solution, but I believe the Public Works Department went in a different direction with managing that rather than using GIS.
I was about to ask about this. Sorry. I did meet with Joe Belomo a few, a few months ago, and I was able to see a system that he had, so I was, I was going to ask if that was GIS, but you're saying that that was, that's a different system.
It might be, it might be a different form of GIS.
I see.
Yes.
I just wanted to add some of the applications that the sheriffs are applying, and I learned about these from our chief, Lalo Malagon. We are using the HLU Department of Homeless Liaison Unit. They use Survey 123, which is an application, an Esri application, where they're able to document the location of our homeless encampments throughout the county. And that's what we use to document where our homeless encampments are, where they're moving, and where they're leaving, and they're reporting those to the state for the purposes of our grants. So that's a, that's a great application that the sheriffs use. And then fire, I think you may have mentioned that the fire department has used a version of GIS to track and help out with our weed abatement. And so it has a wide-ranging scope of applications, and it's very helpful.
Yeah, and piggybacking off of what Manny was saying, Esri has just a whole host of solutions that are ready to come out of the box that Pro West only has to do a couple edits to, just things that, you know, we want as city staff. So it's, yeah, it's incredible, powerful tool. Me and Kevin, we talked about how we're just scratching the surface with our utilization.
Thank you. Yes, I think Karen has a question.
It sounds like it's safe to assume that this program is limited only to our imagination. In other words, we could probably think of a million different uses for it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to be thinking of some.
Yeah, please, please do. And yeah, most of our overlays have been just my conversations with city staff, but if you guys have any ideas, please, please shoot them my way.
Great, yeah. I mean, I was just thinking also about traffic and safety, and I think there's going to be some public comments on, about this. And idea of how do you capture data from something that's not an official accident? Or how do you capture data from near misses? And so do we have like the capability then for someone to say, oh, my gosh, like at this intersection, I had a close call, and, you know, and be able to drop that, you know, utilizing something on the city website right here? You know, this, this was dangerous. And again, we get data, and from there, we can do a policy.
Yeah, and I know other, other cities will actually have their code enforcement complaints on GIS where they're able to drop it and then submit a complaint over GIS. That might be something we'll explore in the future, too. But yeah, if there are no many questions, I can go to the public viewer.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
So I talked with Pro West today, where all their work is done. We're just going to review this as city staff before we make this available to the public. But when we do, we're going to have it on our website, and we'll do public outreach as well, so everybody knows about it. Yeah, so when you open it up, it'll have that little welcome message, welcome to Fillmore. And then on this side is where you'll have your different things you can do. The most important one is the layers. So these are the layers displayed here. The default one is the parcel data. So property owners will be able to, I'll click on City Hall here, but they'll be able to look at their parcel data, and then all of the different information associated with that will come up. They'll get their acreage, their APN number, which is something I get, I get a lot, people ask me, like, oh, what's your, what's my APN number? It's like, I can pull it up. And then it'll have the zoning, it'll be within our curb line, and then lighting and landscaping, special assessment, community facilities, and then different general plan overlay zones, and then the different flood zone and fire zone. And then to toggle those layers, you just have to click. So we have our fire hazard map. This is the new one that was adopted this year, so a big chunk of the city is now in the high fire zone, unfortunately. And then we also have the FEMA, sorry, the liquefaction areas, which the entire city is a liquefaction zone because of our alluvial soils. And then we have our general plan overlay districts. And to figure this out, we do have a legend, so it'll show you the different colors and the different patterns. So like down here, the purple is our business park. We have our conservation, preservation overlay district here in green, and then our North Fillmore specific plan up here in yellow. And then, and the assessment districts, I know there were questions about assessment districts. This will actually have three different options under it. We have our storm drain, community facilities, and lighting. Right now, they're all on, but you can toggle them on and off to see which one that you're interested in. And then another item, we have our street sweeping map, so you can see when your street sweep, street is going to be swept. If you want to figure out the color, it'll be over here in the legend on the corner. And then we also have our bike paths mapped out. It's kind of hard to see with the parcels, but, and our different bike paths. The red's the city limit, that's not a bike path, but yeah, we have the different ones. We have the future one here in brown. I know we haven't, part of this bike trail's been completed, and I think part of it is, should be completed pretty soon. But then the blue are the active ones. And then we'll go to, we have our bus routes from the county, so you're able to see where your bus is going to stop. And then we'll have our electoral districts, which has been available on the website for people to see which, which council district they are. And then finally, we have our zoning map, so you're able to figure out the zone that your house is in.
Impressive.
But yeah, that's the end. If there's anything else.
Oh, thank you, Jacob. This is going to be, and I know that if we get this out into the public, there are going to be people, as you mentioned, nerds, that, and beyond, that will, like myself, will actually love to, you know, to toy around with this and to see these different things. That's great.
Yeah, well, and I used it quite extensively when I was in the private sector with a solar contractor. This was super helpful to be able to pull out.
And it may be helpful, like you said, for businesses, right? To see that, to see the makeup of the city. It's great.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our public comment, and I want to thank everyone who came for public comment for your, for your patience as we work through our meeting. First is Mr. Gabe Teran from Oxnard. All right, welcome, Gabe.
I have a helper this evening, so.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Villan señor, and council, members of the public and staff. My name is Gabe Teran, and I am mayor pro tem for the city of Oxnard. I'm here speaking on my own this evening, but I wanted to bring to your attention and ordinance that the city of Oxnard considered and just passed on July 15th. These are nitrous oxide canisters, as you can see here. They vary in size and volume, but they have one thing in common, they are all flavored. This one is strawberry watermelon. I believe this is cheesecake, and this is strawberry banana. The intention of these devices is for recreational use, and the person using it will get a euphoria. However, with long-term use, there are some potential for serious neurological and physiological effects for the user. And as you can probably imagine, they tend to be used by a younger crowd, but the industry seems to have found that by flavoring them, you can certainly entice people possibly at a younger age, but also keep them using the product because of the reward for the good flavor, very similar to the tactics the vaping industry has used in years past. I bring this to your attention because I started finding these throughout our community on people's lawns, in alleys, in gutters. And it used to be that they were whippets, these little tiny stainless steel containers that had nitrous oxide, and now they sell them in these devices. I have to show you, I have just about a dozen of these. I have not purchased a single one. I have found them all out in the community. And it was something that caught my attention. We looked at it, other jurisdictions throughout California have also done their own ordinances to ban these products. We have banned the sale of these flavored nitrous oxide products within the city of Oxnard, and it's just been so prolific within the city. I wanted to go to all of our neighboring jurisdictions and let them know about what we had done, because I am concerned that by us banning it, the market may migrate to neighboring jurisdictions with less or no regulation. So I just wanted to put that on your radar for consideration. I've emailed your assistant city manager and the clerk some additional information, including our staff report that has some information and research by our city attorney's office. If you have any questions at all, please don't hesitate to reach out to staff or to myself. Happy to talk to you about it. And just know that I, in my professional life, I actually have worked with teens all of my adult life and worked on health promotion and substance use prevention all in that time. I hold two addiction credentials in the state of California, so this is something that is important to me, both professionally and personally. So again, I appreciate this time to address the body, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Council members.
Yeah, so I understand that Oxnard banned the sale of these. Is there, so that's, I assume that's on the civil side. Is there anything on the books for, on the criminal side? Are these criminalized at all?
So no, and you can see in the staff report provided, there's some extensive research, excuse me, by our city attorney's office. And in the state of California, these are already prohibited for sale for recreational purposes. However, as I understand it, the loophole in that is so long as the retailer does not ask, are you going to use this recreationally, then anything goes. And so we typically would find these in our tobacco shops, our outlets. And so we were going to use the tobacco retail licensing ordinance that we have for that, but we decided to just do an all-out ban, because then that wouldn't stop someone from selling at the farmer's market or the swap meet or anything like that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Gabe? Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
And I'm sorry, I do have one more question for you. So you said along with the staff report, but your ordinance is also available or something that we can send as we can look at?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for coming out, and thank you for going to all the other communities, too, and letting us know about this. This wasn't particularly on, on my radar, so, yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We do have several more speakers. Next is Joey Yuhas Lomkowski. And someday, Joey, we'll get it right.
Oh, it's cool. It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Joey Yuhas Lomkowski, and I'm here to speak about my concerns, again, about traffic safety in the city of Fillmore, specifically on Highway 126. There's been a lot of tragic and I think preventable fatalities on the highway recently, and it just really shakes me, it shakes the whole community. So while this happens on a long stretch of the highway, I think that Fillmore can be a leader in working with the state and Caltrans and holding them accountable for their safety priorities. And I asked the city to work with Caltrans to engage the community here in Fillmore and also Pyru around safety and solutions on Highway 26 and also Highway 23. In our own planning and assessment here within the city, I would, I urge us all to just prioritize safety over the movement of vehicles. I know that traffic's an issue, but these fatalities remind us that, you know, it's not really worth someone's life. And I hope our comprehensive traffic safety study, which I think is happening now, reveals ways that we can encourage more youth to walk or bike to school, and more Fillmore residents and visitors to feel safe walking in our city. I read recently in 2017, I read recently that in 2017, Caltrans had a plan to install some safety measures on Highway 126, but the cities of Fillmore, Santa Paul, and Ventura County rejected this project. To me, that's a shame, but I know that's a while ago now, and a lot's changed. So I'm just hoping that we can get some constructive ideas from Caltrans and that we can challenge them and work with them to really make it safer. So I'm not going to propose any solutions personally. I'll leave that to traffic engineers. But I hope that we can all be prepared and welcome their proposals, community input, and make hard decisions to save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Sally Ibarra. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. My name is Sally Ibarra, and I stand here not just as a resident of Fillmore, but as a daughter, a granddaughter, a mother, and a neighbor whose heart breaks every time Highway 126 claims another life. This is not just a stretch of road. It is part of our community, where people we love travel every day. My own grandmother was struck and killed here, and since I began speaking out, we have seen multiple head-on collisions that ended in tragedy. These are not strangers. These are our family members, our friends, and our neighbors. This past week, I conducted a poll through our Facebook Fillmore Community News Group. The message from our residents who took the poll could not be clear. 81%, 325 votes, said yes to installing safety measures on Highway 126. Less than 6% opposed this. If any of you received 81% of the popular vote, in an election, it would be considered a landslide victory. in an election, it would be considered a landslide victory. This is a landslide for safety, a loud united cry from the people that you serve. I believe God calls us to protect the lives He's entrusted us. And tonight, I'm asking you to please honor that calling by taking immediate action. I urge the city to lead the way in organizing a town hall meeting with Caltrans, CHP, Fillmore Public Works, our State Assembly Member, our Senator, and our community members. We need to be in the same room, committed to real, common sense changes that will save lives. We cannot continue to pray over more funerals while doing nothing to prevent the next one. The community is ready, we are willing, and we are united. What we need now is for you, our city leaders, to please act. Thank you, and may God guide us to protect and to preserve the lives of everyone who travels Highway 126. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, our next speaker, and the last one for public speaking, we have one other person who's here for an agendized item, is Angie Zamora.
Good afternoon, City Council, members, staff, and the public. We are here to formally request that regarding the, let me start. We are here to formally raise concerns regarding the increased number of accidents and fatalities occurring on Highway 126. We continue to deeply impact the City of Fillmore and the surrounding communities. We are asking for the City Council and staff to bring this issue to the forefront. We need your help by formalizing a request for change and working with Caltrans, California Highway Patrol, any other relevant agencies to address this urgent issue. We strongly believe that immediate action is needed before we suffer the loss yet of another child, parent, sibling, or loved one. We, as a community, are eager to make change, to collaborate with the city and any other agency so that we can save the life of another loved one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, public comment speakers. And I just wanted to shortly address the concerns. And I think we all have them here on council. We've all been reached out to, and we all know that action needs to be taken. And so the city is beginning to. And I was wondering if our city manager might be able just to give a brief description of what we're starting to do in terms of trying to take action.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is, you know, a very serious issue that's been communicated to us by the community, as the folks who live here. And this isn't a recent issue, you know, Highway 126 over decades has had a reputation of being a dangerous roadway at times, if not navigated correctly. And so what the action that I began to undertake is to reach out to the Ventura County Transportation Commission to ask them to begin accumulating some data for us to review with like some of the agencies and partners that you mentioned, CHP, the California Highway Patrol. And then also to reach out to our state legislators and our Congresswoman, Julia Brownlee, and bring these entities together so that we can understand the impact of this community, the type of accidents that are happening here, and the safety improvements that are needed. You know, we had, Caltrans, as you mentioned, had proposed a project back, I want to say back in 2012. And I think Joey had mentioned that. While that was ultimately, you know, you know, the pushback from the community was felt at that time, we didn't feel like those solutions were right. It doesn't mean that our work is done. It means that we need to take a look at and look at other solutions that need to be done. And not just from the stretch from Fillmore to Santa Paula, but from, really, from the LA County line to Santa Paula. As you can see with these last three accidents that happened, they all happened, you know, east of Fillmore and east of where those improvements were planned. So those improvements that would have been installed wouldn't have prevented any of these accidents. So it really is the entire stretch of the 126 that we need to focus on. And so I just want to communicate to you that I'm working on putting together a convening of a meeting. What will probably happen is a meeting with staff and these agencies initially, and then working with the council to see if we can convene a town hall meeting so that the community can also vocalize, you know, their ideas and their concerns to these agencies.
Thank you. Thank you, Manuel. I appreciate that. And we appreciate all of your comments and to know that we are moving forward with action. I've, you know, I've noted in different meetings how Fillmore in particular has a four- or five-lane highway running through our city unlike any other city. You can go to Simi or Moore Park, except for Ojai. Now, Ojai does have the highway, but we know that it's, you know, two lanes there, and everyone goes slow through the downtown Ojai. But Fillmore in particular has such a, you know, that big highway running through us. So we're going to be addressing this. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item, our City Council reports, recommendations, comments, commission reports, and board reports. So I hand it over to my fellow council members. Any updates?
I don't have any updates, but I just want to thank something that's coming from the bottom of my heart to our first responders. My heart thanks you so much. I'm so grateful for everything you do.
Thank you, Albert. We are with you. Do we have any other updates? Yes, okay, John.
So it's been almost a month, and it's been a very busy month. So I want to try to keep my comments very short as possible because during that month period, I've been to about 10 different meetings. So the first was starting on July 11th, the Business Roundtable meeting that we had here at City Hall, and then a follow-up meeting that I met with the Economic Development Council, a subcommittee here of our council. Basically, what we, what the outcome of those meetings was that we heard from the business community here in Fillmore, not just downtown, but other businesses as well, about their concerns and what the city can do to help the businesses in town. I would, you know, I don't think I speak alone when saying that it was a really good meeting. We heard, we definitely heard what they were saying, which was, hey, we need, we need things like, things like signs that'll point people to the downtown area. Things like parking signs. We need a bathroom to be opened up because people go downtown, and there's nowhere for them to use the bathroom except for, unless they go into the businesses. So bottom line is, we heard a lot of really good feedback from them about things that we can do something about. And so we're going to continue down that path. There's a follow-up meeting with that same Business Roundtable and any other businesses on September 11th at Red Engine Brewing. So that covers two meetings right there. So let's see what else. Oh, I also attended the Joint Powers Insurance Authority in La Palma. This is the first time I'd ever went to this meeting. It's an annual meeting where basically all the cities that are part of this Joint Powers Authority vote on who the board is going to be. We vote on that, and then we get an update from the Joint Powers Authority on what the finances are. And if you've never heard of them, which I'd heard of this type of board before, basically what happens is a bunch of cities get together, and instead of paying an outside insurance company for insurance, for liability insurance and those types of things, everybody pulls their resources, and all of your fees go into a giant pool. And so that if there's then a claim against any of the cities that are part of the pool, the, any payouts would come out of that giant pool. And so far, I have to say, they're doing an excellent job. We're in very, very good shape, and the majority of cities in California are part of this Joint Powers Authority. It's pretty fascinating and a great idea. I mean, you know, to minimize our costs and also give ourselves, you know, joint protection. So that was on the 23rd. And then, let's see. I also attended the, on the 25th, I attended the Santa Paula Mayor's Roundtable on Immigration. And that really was very informative. It was very interesting to hear all the resources that are available. And mainly, what they're, what the main thrust of the meeting was, these are all resources for people that are affected by immigration raids and people that have been detained by ICE. And so we heard from people saying, hey, look, when the breadwinner, if the breadwinner of the family gets detained and maybe, you know, sent away, what does the remaining family do? I mean, they still need food. They still need, you know, to make their rent money. And so a lot of the resources that were called out there were very, you know, to me, very, you know, it touched my heart because these are very real ramifications of what's going on in our country. And these were organizations and people that really care about the effects that are happening in our communities. And so definitely something worth going to and something worth supporting. And I definitely admire Beto Sanchez, the Mayor of Santa Paula, for putting this together. And we had representatives from everything, from law enforcement to the Mexican consulate, to just all kinds of different resources for food, for temporary housing, for temporary financial help for meeting rent. It was an excellent program. Okay, and then I think, that should, that should cover it for now. There are other things on my list, but I just wanted to highlight the main ones that were of importance.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Much appreciated. If anyone has any other updates, Carrie?
Oh, yeah, just a couple of things. As far as updates on committees, the committees that I sit on were dark while the last, same time council was dark, and so we took advantage of vacation time. But I wanted to touch on a couple of things with regard to the Highway 126 issues. And we had speakers discuss this. What I'd like to do is, sometimes I feel, first, let me say, the Highway 126 issue has, I think, from my perspective, become like the most, the largest concern of constituents that I talk to now. You know, it's kind of edged its way even above the homeless situation now. And I hear more concerns and issues about Highway 126 than anything. So as we're moving forward with the things that our Assistant City Managers just talked about, I'm hoping that you would consider giving us updates in the community and update that future meetings, every council meeting provides some kind of a snippet, at least something of what's going on. So I think it's going to put our community more at ease knowing that we are moving forward with some of these things to try to rectify and improve this roadway. And aside from that, just a reminder that I have my porch talk tomorrow, open to all between 6:00 and 8:00 at my house on my front porch. And it's just a period of time where we just get together and talk about anything that's Fillmore-related. And I'm talking to a lot of constituents every, we do it twice a month, the second and fourth Wednesday, and it's been really successful. So we took a break this last month, but we're back on schedule now. So anyone who'd like to join us, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And so just for a clarification on what your request is, would that be an update included in the City Manager's report? If there's something, okay, all right, okay. Yes, great. I'm in agreement with that as well. Okay, I just have a couple of short updates myself. Regarding commissions for the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, I could announce that we do have a new general manager. So Chris Thyson, who served as a general manager of the Regional Sanitation District for almost 10 years, retiring. And through a lengthy process, we were able to bring on Mr. Eric Zetz. He's actually from the City of Oxnard. And Mr. Zetz has extensive background expertise and years working particularly in landfills. And he did that up north, sort of in the Central Valley. So it is a, should I say, it's a niche career to have that experience in landfill. So just rest assured that our sanitation district, and particularly toll and landfill, we feel are in really good hands with Mr. Zetz. So I look forward to working with him as, you know, being on the board of VRSD. Next update is, I wanted to thank John for giving the great updates about the roundtable. And thank you for going to the meeting on immigration and the resources in Santa Paula. I just wanted to mention today that myself, just speaking as a private citizen, I went and I supported something that was on the agenda, the Board of Supervisors, particularly Supervisor Vianney Lopez. She's our supervisor in the Oxnard area. She made a proposal to establish a Ventura County Immigration Legal Defense Fund, you know, appropriation of about $250,000, and as well as add a handful of full-time staff on a limited time, about three years, to the Public Defender's Office that are particularly would be working on immigration attorney work needed in our community. There was 129 speakers there today. You know, I can't say officially where they all stood, but I'll just tell you, there was a lot of support in the community and, you know, from different cities and jurisdictions for this. They might still be doing public comment right now, but I'll provide an update to see if the county does take action on this, which I think will be really beneficial for all of us, for all of our communities, particularly our families, just speaking particularly here in Fillmore. So that was, that's one other update. And then I want to remind the community that this Thursday at 3:00 PM, right here in front of City Hall, I will be there to get the scoop. If you want to stay in the loop, get the scoop with Mayor Villan señor. We're going to have an ice cream social. So we're going to have ice cream free to the public, 3:00 PM. And come and, you know, let's talk, and we're going to let you know what's going on with the city, what's going on with all these great services that we're providing, updates on projects. And it's just, it's still, it's still warm, you know. Our heat wave is, I think, is starting to go down a little bit, but 3:00 PM is just a great time to get some ice cream, and let's come and socialize and connect and get filled in on the city. So that is Thursday, Thursday at 3:00 PM. And go to the city's social media pages, Facebook, Instagram, and there's a QR code there. And, you know, you could just let us, there's no need to register, but there is a thing to say, hey, I'm coming, or I'm going to bring two other people so we know that we have enough ice cream for everybody. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, there's no other updates, no other updates. We'll move on now to item, agenda number eight, Consent Calendar. We have a lot of minutes there, again. Thank you, Ray, for all your work on that. All right, can I get, entertain a motion on consent?
So moved.
Okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our consent calendar passes. And we'll move on to our first item, New Business. And that is Item 9A, The Contract with Fourleaf Incorporated to Conduct Code Enforcement Services. And good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the last year or a little over a year, we've been operating without a code enforcement officer. The planning technician and myself and the City Attorney's Office has been behaving as a code enforcement department amongst our other work. And we've discovered a number of months ago that we can't continue to do that in our own work. So with the help of the City Manager's Office, Erica Herrera, we just went out to an RFP, searching for a code enforcement officer. We did learn that we don't have enough code enforcement cases to have an employee, but to have a consulting company. And the consulting company would still only be part-time. The workload isn't that severe. And we went out to a proposal, and Fourleaf, we believe, is the most qualified consulting firm. There, we recommend hiring Fourleaf for three years, not to exceed $200,000. We budgeted $120,000 for this year. They'll be paid on an hourly rate. Now, the bulk of their work initially is to create a filing system. We don't have much, we do have a filing system. We need to improve upon that. We also would like Fourleaf to look at our codes and our procedures, see if we can improve our procedures and make it a little bit easier to make a complaint and that we can follow up. We learned through this process of doing code enforcement that in a vast amount of time is spent on public noticing and communicating back and forth with so-called violators and determining if a violation is valid or not. And then going through due process. That is, seems like a bulk of code enforcement. That is, seems like a bulk of code enforcement. But with that, I recommend to enter into a three-year contract with Forleaf. Forleaf is present, her name's Alejandra Molina from Forleaf, and if you'd like, she can introduce herself, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members and staff. I am Alejandra Molina. I am the code enforcement manager for Forleaf. I'm Southern California, Northern California, somewhat Pacific Northwest, so we're everywhere, and we do different contracts. Spoke to Kevin a year ago, to Imaínés, and we spoke on the challenges and the needs of Fillmore. We're here to streamline the process and assist the city as much as we can. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I do have a question, maybe it might be for both of you. And that is, Kevin, I know in the staff report, it was mentioned about our, the street food vendors, street food vendors on 126, and that is a particular area that we want to concentrate on. Can you talk about your flexibility, the flexibility of code enforcement, to be able to make those, you know, kind of unannounced visits there in off-hours?
We do that now. We've removed seven street vendors, and we made visits. There's one in particular that's very difficult to remove, because it's not in our jurisdiction, is on Caltrans right-of-way. The easiest way to remove them was to talk to property owners. Property owners discovered that they did not realize food vendors were on their property. So, once they found out, and then it was easy to remove them. But, we do visit them. We go there off-hours, because that's when they operate, and the police department attends just to keep the peace, because it's not a crime, they're just there just to keep the peace. We'll work with Forleaf. One of their specialties is removal of street vendors, we've learned. We followed the work that they've done in the city of Fontana and some of the other cities, and they're experts in this issue.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for updating on that.
You're welcome. Any more questions?
Okay, yes.
Yeah, and this question's probably directed at Kevin, I think. One thing that I've heard, ever since I've been involved in council, well, and certainly since we have been without a code enforcement officer, is that a lot of the complaints or violations are not addressed, that they are complaint-driven. So, if a constituent sees something going on that is bothersome to them, you know, graffiti someplace, or I know the hotline for that, but, or whatever the violation is, it won't get fixed until the constituent calls in, so there's, and files the complaint. So, my question is, is, do you see that changing? Will there be more proactive, and I think they call it, was it windshield?
Windshield surveys.
Windshield surveys, where violations, someone will be driving around the community, and they'll observe something, and they won't wait for it to be, for a complaint to be filed?
We'll continue with it being complaint-driven. With Mike Crockney's passing, we stopped the windshield surveys, just because we didn't have time. Mike was able to, the previous code enforcement officer, he was able to drive every week and pick up the health and safety issues, and the most obvious code enforcement. That's primarily what he was doing. We'll now reactivate that with Forleaf. So, they'll drive around the city, take up illegal signs that you see, or identify those things that are safety-related.
Okay.
But, we're not, we're not on a witch hunt. Sometimes, when you do code enforcement, it feels like we're on a witch hunt, we're after people, and that's not the case.
Okay.
So, we'll still rely on complaints.
Thank you. And I think that's another sort of reminder again to the public that, again, through our city website, we do have a whole process for how to submit a, excuse me, how to submit a complaint, and particularly, you know, submit photos and, you know, contact, so.
Correct.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion on this item, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize a three-year contract with Forleaf Inc. to not exceed $200,000 per the attached contract, and authorize the acting city manager to execute the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Second?
And I have a second? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is 9B, The Contract with Bureau Veritas for the preparation and adoption of the 2025 California Building Code. Yeah, thank you.
Well, Madam Mayor, you pretty much gave my presentation. That's it, but just know this, every January, or no, every three years, we get a new building code. And we're to, we have the ability to adopt it and make some changes based on the city of Fillmore's geology, the soils, or atmospherically, the wind, or the temperature, we can make some changes to the building code ourselves. And we have done that. In the past, we've made changes to the type of pipe that goes in the ground, or fire sprinklers, or you name it, that's how thick concrete has to be, and so forth. We're asking that you, we enter into a contract with Bureau Veritas. They are our consulting company for building and safety. And we'll be before you in December with a new building code. The Bureau Veritas is here, if you have any questions, and they can answer any questions that you may have. This is a budgeted item, and we're ready to get started.
Okay, thank you. Council members, have any questions? Okay, comments? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the acting city manager to enter into a contract with Bureau Veritas in an amount not to exceed $22,900 per the attached contract.
I'll second.
And I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 9C now is the consideration of an ordinance to revise the municipal code, Chapter 2.28, to clarify the name and function of the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission. Good evening, Norelli.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Fillmore residents. As you mentioned, it was a dark month last month, but we definitely were working, caught up on the minutes, and doing some administrative cleanup. So, this ordinance is in particular to update the Fillmore Municipal Code, Chapter 2.28, to correct some outdated references to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and ensure the consistency to use the new name, which is now the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission, throughout the code. So, a little bit of historical background, prior to 2023, there used to be two commissions, the arts commissions and the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, it was recommended and approved by council and staff to consolidate these two commissions and create the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commissions, as they were very similar. And, you know, by consolidating, they could still, they could still fulfill the goals. And so, so yes, so this update ensures clarity, consistency, and legal alignment with the city's intent in adopting Ordinance 23947. And additionally, this clarification also ensures that the current members who were appointed to the restructured commission are properly recognized under this corrected commission's name, and this action resolves any questions about the validity of their appointments. This has no fiscal impact, and the item meets the council goals to ensure parks and recreation and the core value of organizational excellence. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And have any questions for Norelli? Okay, seeing none then. Again, I'll entertain a motion. Oops, and this is a first, yeah, I'm sorry, this is a first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 25-986, updating municipal code, Chapter 2.28, to correct outdated references to the Parks and Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission.
I'll second.
Actually, let's see.
Wait, hold on, I need to do it.
Take my second.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, and the ordinance, number 25986, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fillmore, California, making minor revisions to portions of Fillmore Municipal Code, Chapter 2.28, the regulations for the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission.
I'll second.
Thank you, I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, our next item is 9D, The Sewer Easement Agreement with the Ventura County Transportation Commission for Railroad Crossing. And good evening, Roxanne.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potent, City Council, and Fillmore residents. I have a quick PowerPoint, just to, picture's worth 10,000 words, right? So, you have your staff report in front of you. I wanted to give you a little context in bearing this. Sewer easement agreement with the Ventura County Transportation Commission, which allows the city of Fillmore to install and operate a sewer under crossing under their rail line. And so, this picture that I put up before you, this is related to the Creekside Development, also known as Track 6053, or Williams Homes, which is in North Fillmore. North Fillmore, basically, everything above First Street drains through one rail crossing at B Street right now. So, all of North Fillmore has one rail under crossing. And it's been in our sewer master plan for a long time that this is a critical crossing that's, you know, yeah, it's definitely flowing pretty full all the time. We haven't had overflows, thankfully, but we have known that it's already taxed, and we can't really add to it, and we should remove from it when we can. And so, this project that Creekside is doing, you know, we identified that when we were entitling the development, and it was identified that they can't add to the B Street overload, which is what we call it. And so, the red area at the top of the picture here is the Creekside Development in North Fillmore, specific plant area. The yellow area is an existing portion of the homes there along Good Enough Road that right now contribute to the B Street crossing. But, the project that Williams Homes is doing is going to down here where this says test number one, near Hawthorne Lane. They're going to take that existing manhole and close off the pipe that goes over to B Street, and connect to it, and go under the railroad crossing and down C Street. There's also a reach further down C Street where it goes from a 10-inch sewer to an 8-inch sewer, back to a 10-inch sewer that they're going to upsize to 10-inch. So, we'll end up with a full connection that goes 8 to 10 to 12, to the new 24-inch that we put in south of Highway 126 because of that big failure. And then, from River Street to the plant, it's a 30-inch. So, we'll have, you know, a much better capacity. And so, I just wanted to show this picture to you and emphasize the import of having a new rail under crossing, because it now takes the new North Fillmore specific plant area and gives it another outlet, which makes it developable. Really, this is all part of the entitlement. And so, from there, no, this, go forward, there we go. This is an aerial view of the same area. This is the rail right-of-way, that's VCTC, that crosses Good Enough Road north of Old Telegraph Road, which is where C Street, Hawthorne and Good Enough is where the sewer diversion will connect the pipe. The pipe will come down across the railroad through Old Telegraph Road and connect to an existing manhole by Shields Park, creating this new pathway down to the plant. And so, this is an exhibit out of the VCTC agreement. This area here in yellow is that rail right-of-way, and that 60-foot on either side of the center line of Good Enough Road is the easement area, where they're basically giving us authorization to own-operate, maintain that new sewer line. Once Williams Homes constructs it, it will be accepted as public sewer to the city and allow us to not only have a place for the new development to drain that doesn't tax existing infrastructure, but it's also taking some of the pressure off of that existing infrastructure with this project. So, that concludes my report. I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions, council? No? Yeah? Thank you, and you said, that picture does, a thousand words. Okay, all right, no questions? Then I'll entertain a motion on this.
I move that the city council authorize city manager, or designee, to execute and record a sewer easement agreement with Ventura County Transportation Commission to allow Williams Homes to install the new public sewer main crossing underneath the railroad right-of-way in between Good Enough Road and C Street, immediately north of Old Telegraph Road.
Okay, great. I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Roxanne. Okay, our next item is Item 9E, to provide direction to staff on hosting an immigration resources workshop. And we do have one public speaker on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. At the July 8th meeting, the council gave direction to staff to come back with a report and give some recommendations on coordinating an immigration resources workshop, much in the vein as the one that was coordinated by the city of Moore Park in June. And so, what the, what we've done is, we also got tasked with taking a look at what other cities were doing. So, I provided an update what cities in Ventura County were working on, and you heard about some of those today. City of Santa Paula hosted a roundtable discussion that was very well-attended and good information was passed on. And so, based on that direction, city staff reached out to a number of presenters and also felt that it would be helpful to have a number of city staff present on relevant information. So, in the staff report, we recommend, as proposed presenters, our city attorney, and to discuss, you know, what is the local, what is local government's role in immigration enforcement in the event that, you know, the city does see an increase in that activity? Lot of residents have questions about, you know, where do those, where do the roles intersect, and where do they don't? What can the city do and what the city can't do? So, I think a presentation on that subject matter would be helpful for the community, and also a presentation from our sheriff's department, our police department, to also understand what is the, what is the role of our police department, and, you know, what can they do and what can't they do in immigration enforcement activity. We felt it would be very helpful if this is a resource workshop, to have an immigration attorney that has experience working with the immigrant community within the Santa Clara River Valley. And so, we thought of immigrant, immigration attorney Pedro Chávez. And he's, we've had communication with him, and he is prepared to make that presentation. And I want to make sure that folks understand that Pedro Chávez, the immigration attorney, is not the same person as Pedro Chávez, the Santa Paula mayor. And Santa Paula mayor is doing a great job in his community, on informing his community about immigration rights and resources. But yeah, so, they're two different people. We did get a commitment from Kelly Brown, who is the Community Information Officer with Interface Children and Family Services. And what they've put together is 211 Now. It's a branch of 211, which is the service that folks can either text or call to get information about different social services that are available within the county. And what 211 Now is, are Ventura County-specific resources, specifically related to immigration, you know, immigration-related resources. So, she, we think she'd be a great presenter. And then, we have two other recommendations that we have not received a commitment from, but certainly organizations that are working and have had years of experience working with the immigration community, and are subject matter experts and trusted messengers in the community. So, MyCop is one of those organizations, and MyCop works specifically with indigenous migrant communities, and they have staff members that speak a multitude of indigenous languages, such as, you know, Borobehcha, Nahuatl, and Michteco, which, you know, we do have populations of such communities within the Santa Clara River Valley. So, we felt that with their services that they provide and their communication with the community, that they would be a good presenter. And the other was 805 Undocu Fund, and they're a nonprofit that offers emergency assistance funds and direct financial relief for undocumented and mixed-status families, and also referrals to immigration attorneys' services. So, we felt that those, that would be a good place to start, and certainly want to hear and certainly want to hear from the Council on any other organizations that they feel would be helpful. As far as the format of this workshop, what we saw in Moore Park was a hybrid style of a meeting where people were allowed to attend in person. But then we would also have a Zoom stream for those that either couldn't make it or maybe were a little scared of potential enforcement and felt like they could more safely watch and get the resources from home. The other options, what we could do is if we, for whatever reason, we felt that maybe this wouldn't be very well attended, we could do a pre-recorded workshop and then make these resources available through links and then also present the recording of the workshop via our social media, YouTube, Facebook resources. So, you know, in terms of a fiscal impact, we did get a proposal for translation services in the amount of $820, for which will be paid out of General Fund Line Item 1014207. And at this point, I'd like to open it up to the Council to ask questions or provide feedback and give direction.
Sorry, yes, before discussion, if anyone has any questions for Manny specifically, thank you.
So he did ask about if there are other potential speakers. So I know we have a great asset in our city attorney here, but I know that my daughter works for Public Counsel and they did a workshop for Los Angeles Unified School District, specifically around people setting up, I guess, what-if scenarios. Like if the main breadwinner is taken, then how do you set up, for example, a guardianship that will hold up in court? And so that is, I think, very useful. And maybe my daughter wouldn't do it, but someone from Public Counsel might be able to provide that kind of legal advice to people who might need it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Manny before we... I appreciate your comment, John. I think we'll come back around to it. If anyone had any questions for...
The list that you provided, I think is a very good list.
We've... Okay, we have a public speaker. That's why I just wanted to make sure if anyone had any specific questions. So I will call up our public speaker right now, Ms. Jasmine Duran.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jasmine Duran and I'm speaking on behalf of Autism Society of Ventura County. We appreciate the city's effort to host an immigration resources workshop and your commitment to supporting immigrant families in Fillmore. ASVC respectfully requests that accommodations for people with disabilities and resources for immigrants with disabilities are included as part of this workshop. ASVC would appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with the city and other organizations to ensure the workshop is accessible and inclusive for all immigrants and allies, particularly individuals with disabilities. Accessibility is essential and we encourage, one, engaging organizations like Autism Society of Ventura County, Tri Counties Regional Center, and Tri Counties GLAD to offer guidance and support on accessibility needs; two, providing plain language materials to ensure information is clear and understandable to all. And thank you for your leadership in fostering trust, inclusivity, and engagement in our community. And for more information regarding Autism Society or our proposed recommendations, you can email us at advocacy@autismventura.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, great. Okay, so John, thank you for your... Yes?
I just wanted to also add a little bit more context. The direction that the Council gave was to have an immigration resources forum that provided resources, but also would not, could not be interpreted in a way that where the Council, the city, would be given advice on how to get around federal laws and whatnot. So I wanted to make sure that that context with which this forum or the direction that staff was given is communicated to the public. And with that, please.
Thank you. Appreciate that reminder. Okay. So I'm sorry, so back to John. I know Albert had another comment too, and Carrie as well.
Yeah, so I think the list of presenters is very good. Two others that might, just, I don't have a specific organization, but that I've heard about is, and I think this has to do with transportation. So again, going back to the idea that the Mayor of Santa Paula was talking about, which was how do you help people that are affected by the raids that are going on and the people that are left behind? So one of the things was, hey, well, how do we get people from point A to point B? If, again, the breadwinner is not there or there's an issue there, so transportation. And the other one was medical. So they also had people there that were willing to, if not, deliver the person to their medical appointments if needed. But also, I believe they also had services that would come to a person if they were concerned about not being able to get transported. So those two areas, I think, would be fruitful as well. And other than that, I think it's a great list and I'm fully supportive of what staff has recommended.
Thank you, yes. Albert, I know you had to mention something. Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay. A couple things. I indicated at our last meeting that, you know, I was on board with this and authorizing it to come forward to Council with the caveat that we not give, as Manny mentioned, we not provide legal direction on how to circumvent federal law. So I went through this list that we have here of proposed speakers and groups. And the only issue I had was with the 805 Undocu Fund. And just as an example, there was several references on their website providing phone numbers on where constituents or immigrants could call to warn of any federal ICE... Wherever they saw them. And I think that's, from my perspective, that's kind of crossing the line. I mean, I don't think law enforcement would appreciate it if, just general law enforcement, if they were performing some kind of a drug raid, if they had constituents saying, okay, you know, I've seen detectives at such and such an address, you know, get out of there. And to me, that crosses a line. And I say that and I think it's really important that we remember that we took that oath of office as Council members, not just to the state of California, but to the Constitution of the United States as well. So I know there's debate about whether the Constitution is applicable to immigrants. And again, we're not talking about illegal immigrants here necessarily. So immigrants could mean citizens as well. So I have a concern about that group specifically. So my preference, number one, would be to omit them from the list. And then my second recommendation, and I'm jumping the gun on this probably, would be, again, out of concern for just the safety that apparently is out there for anybody who's affected to attend group sessions. I prefer to see a pre-recorded workshop that can be shared in the city's YouTube channel as opposed to a whole community, the way Moore Park did it or the way Santa Paula did it. I think it'd be just as effective and probably would get more people involved. And one other thing I need to ask, Christina, you mentioned the meeting today at City Hall. And what was the dollar amount that you said they were asking for?
It was the County Board of Supervisors.
I'm sorry. What did I say?
The City Hall.
Oh, sorry. No, Board of Supervisors, yeah.
So, okay, so the proposal from Supervisor Lopez was to have a legal defense fund established in the county. Let me see, I had pulled it up on my phone. $250,000, a finite amount. That was one part of a proposal. Let me see here. So there was a presentation by several groups. And also, Carrie, just to let you know too, if you'd like to... If anyone else would like to watch the Board of Supervisors meeting from 3:00 PM today, actually, 805 Undocu Fund and MyCop did a joint presentation, really establishing what has happened in the county the last couple of weeks with really, really good data and information, number-wise. So just want to let you know that. Let me see here. So approve appropriation of the amount of $250,000 for using of the fund's purpose. And the purpose of the fund is providing a broad range of legal, educational, and outreach services to community members who are affected or potentially affected by federal immigration enforcement activities. That's one part of it. Another part of it is to, let me see here... Okay, adopt a resolution establishing seven fixed terms positions in the public defender's immigration defense unit, effective for three years, almost from now, from August of 2025 to June 30th, 2028. And there's details about that. And then there's some other parts of the proposal as well. Right now, the migrant education program is on the chopping block at the federal level, completely. A program that's been around for 50 or more years and operates here in Ventura County for as much time. So another part of this proposal was to fund, should federal funds be chopped for the migrant education program, to assist, again, over the next three-year period, to help backfill that, if that happens. And then there was a couple of other sort of policy proposals, yeah, to engage with the county so that they understand policies and protocols for county staff regarding access to county facilities and that sort of thing. And also, I think, some adjustments to their legislative platform. But you can get more information on the County Board of Supervisors.
The number that I received from one of the supervisors, and you're probably looking at the same information I'm looking at, what they're asking for is $6.171 million, so in all total. And the reason I only raise that now in the context of our community here is that I want to make sure that if this is granted, and I don't know whether the Board of Supervisors, they concluded their meeting, if they approved this funding, I want to make sure that we remember when we're addressing this issue that there's $6.171 million that's being allocated at the county level and is that going to filter down to us or not? So I just want us to be conscious of that when we're talking about expenditures at the city level.
Yeah, and we'll have to figure out and maybe come back around and clarify what the total amount is. What I've heard was 2 million. And so, yeah.
That's what I thought at first too, and then I asked for clarification and it came back at $6.17 with a breakdown.
Okay, all right, let's get... Yeah, we'll figure out final word on that. Okay, so, if anybody else have any more comments?
I was just gonna mention, I'm sorry, Louise, that I was informed that some of the additional services that 805 Undocument does provide is, you know, resources for transportation and healthcare. So you mentioned those, John. I wanted to mention that, not to, you know, throw your opinion one way or the other, but that is indeed one thing that they do. And certainly through 211 Now, I am sure if somebody were to call 211 Now, 805 Undocu Fund would be one of those organizations that would be called. And in that event, if they were to reach them, I'm sure they would be connected to the services that they need. So just to put that out there.
I do like some of the items here on the list, starting with the city attorney. I think it's good to set the tone initially of what the city's role is and what we can do, what we're able to facilitate and what we're not able to facilitate. And again, thank you, Manny, for reiterating the general guideline of what this is for. This is to provide assistance for those who may be... They lost the main breadwinner and they need assistance. We, you know, nobody here wants to see the children suffer and go hungry. So I'm really grateful for this service that is going to be provided to the people. I do like what John said as well with the organization that he mentioned, kind of creating a pathway of assistance to these individuals. I think that's a little bit less scattered in, well, okay, you need help with this, maybe that, maybe this. I think if there's a service out there that can provide a pathway of... Who is the individual? What is their situation? How do we move forward with this individual? I think that kind of streamlines and creates a pipeline, if that's available, if that's possible. As opposed to, hey, you know, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this, which is, it kind of feels like that a little bit. I'm not sure if that's really what we would end up seeing with this event. But I think, you know, identifying those in need and creating a straight and narrow path for them, I think that's super efficient. The other, I did also have a little bit of a concern with 805 Undocu Fund. I think the services that are listed here, I think it's awesome. You know, I think that goes above and beyond most of the concerns as well as the additional services that Manny, that you mentioned right now that are not on this list. I think that those are good services that they provide. My concern is when people go to find this organization, what they see that is being promoted on their social media sites. I think some people might find it a little bit jarring. Some people might feel the language on there is profane and it might kind of undermine law enforcement a little bit. I think that's concerning. I think citizens, when they go online and they see this kind of stuff, sometimes they get a little bit taken aback and that might overshadow the fact that there is still great resources there for the community. I think that's my only concern, really. Growing up, moving on to MyCop, growing up, we did live with some people who spoke Nahuatl. And I still see them to this day in my neighborhood. I agree, there are a lot of people here who speak indigenous languages. So I'm glad that that organization is there to provide assistance to them. It's hard for me to really say what else I want to see and what not to see. I think this is more like the general guidelines. And I believe you will be instrumental, Manny, in formulating what is, how this is gonna play out and how it's gonna be presented and how the forum's gonna run. That's one of the kind of obscure things that I have in my mind is how is it gonna run? Is it gonna be open to public speaking as well? If so, is there anything that we can do to make sure that the public comments are within guidelines? Or is there anything that we can do to make sure we stay on track and focused on helping people? I'm kind of speaking randomly because that's how I kind of feel about this a little bit. So the online workshop, I think that's also a good idea. People could then, out of the comfort of their home, they could chime in. Maybe they're at work. They could take a break. So, I don't know, those are just my opinions. I'm still a little bit, a little bit mind-fogged about it, about how it's gonna play out. But I am grateful for the opportunity to help people in need.
Yeah, if I can, you know, elaborate a little bit more on what we had in mind in terms of structuring the meeting. And please chime in and let me know if you guys have, if the Council has different opinions on how to structure it. But what we were thinking of is structuring each speaker and giving an average of 15 to 20 minutes per speaker and not allowing questions at that, letting the public speakers make their presentations and then having a designated public comment period, where we would give anywhere between, you know, a minute and a half to three minutes for questions and/or comments. And then we would give opportunities for, you know, the individual who the question was directed at, an opportunity to respond. And we would carve out a designated time for that period, perhaps 30 minutes or so. And what we thought would be a good amount of time for this... And what we thought would, would be a good amount of time for this meeting would be two hours, so we want to keep it focused and structured, and it would be timed, you know, accordingly, so we did finish at that time. But, you know, those are my thoughts at this point, and happy to hear your feedback. If you want that to be longer, you let me know. If you want to allow questions at the end of presentations, let me know that, too. Just with this format, saving questions and comments at the end, I think it, and designate a specific time, it will help to ensure that, that we complete the workshop in a reasonable time, and then we can offer opportunity for the, for any of those in attendance to get resources that the speakers would bring and provide, and so that they can ask follow-up questions in the future.
All right, yeah, thank you. So I, I just want to comment that I, I think we definitely need to have the workshop, both hybrid, you know, people here and also available online. And I think the idea for questions and answers, or sticking only to questions and answers and not particular comments, is really good. And if we want to even make it sort of serving two purposes, one, keep things streamlined, avoiding comments, bless you, but then also kind of protecting those who ask questions. We can have, I think it'd be great to have pen and paper and people who are just kind of going up and down, and just tell people, if you have questions, here's, you know, pen and paper, and pass it down, and maybe have the question written by, sorry, read aloud by staff or someone who is, I think that would be a really moderated, there you go. I think that would be really great. And same thing as online, right? Someone submits a question, maybe it even is received to a rally, for example, and so she's the one who asks that question from online, and that way the, you know, the person, you know, gets her questions asked and answered, but not particularly from them.
Would may be difficult, you know, if we do have someone that, that does speak an indigenous language, I don't know if we'd be able to, to read that. So in that case, we would, we would probably allow them to ask the question.
Sure, of course.
And, yeah, and depending who attends, we may not have somebody able to respond. But that's, that speaks to, you know, our, the, one of the speakers who came, and just to give us time to, to prepare and make sure that we have the right coordination of translation available. But I, that's a great idea about the written comment cards. We just probably have, would have to think a little bit more on how to implement it.
Right.
Yeah, and Manny, if you recall, back in the marijuana days, that's how we held that public session in the, when I was 60, whatever year it was.
Okay, so that's how you did it? Yeah, written out questions and answers?
Marijuana days spelled D-A-Z-E.
That really came out bad, didn't it?
The town hall.
Manny knows what marijuana days I'm talking about.
Yes, the town halls we had.
Okay. And so does Tiffany.
Good, great. Well, those were just my recommendations on the format. In terms of the listed groups, you know, I, I hear, I hear you, what you're saying, Carrie, and also Louise. I know that they're a wonderful organization that does provide, just heard them earlier today, the board supervisors, really good information. And, you know, I just, I've got to make the comment that, you know, they, there is numbers to call for folks in the community who see ICE in the community, and, you know, regarding, you know, the, upholding the constitution, you know, they're calling, this again, this is my opinion, they're calling and letting folks know that enforcement actions are going on that have no due process, that are violating the constitution. So, you know, I just, that's my opinion, that's, that's what I want to say out there. In addition to that, I want to say that the information that 805 UndocuFund can provide can also be provided by, you know, a couple of the organizations, I think, that are already listed, and including the attorney, Pedro Chavez. So, you know, I, I think we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna get the information out, and I think that's, that's what we're all on board with, is not promoting, like you said, any kind of nefarious activities to some, but informing, educating our community, being bilingual, having it be a, you know, accessible in Spanish. And, and I think it's important that it comes from the community. I didn't know if anyone had questions, or others might say, why is Fillmore doing it? It's potentially the county, and there's resources already out there on social media. And my response to that is, and I think we all really know, when it comes from us, when it comes from our local council members, it's held here, you know, in city hall, it's promoted on the Fillmore, you know, website or social media, whatever it may be, we know our local people listen, that they trust us, they know us the most. So, like you said, Louise, it's, there's so much information that's out there, but for the person who really might need it in our town, they may just not know where to access it. But if they hear about it from us, from the city, and they know what's happening, they may come, or they may download it or watch it and get that information. So, I think, I think that's key.
Can I add a little bit to that? And I think, to be blunt, I mean, we are a community that is majority Hispanic and majority immigrants. So I think it would be a disservice to our community if we didn't do something to help those that are affected by what's going on at the national level. We can't obviously affect the policies that are coming down from Washington, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but we can certainly have an impact on the people that are here in our community, that are our neighbors, that are our friends, that are our relatives. And, you know, I think, I, in my opinion, we're, we are doing what needs to be done for our community when we, when we do this kind of action, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And the only additions, again, I think, John, you touched on it, that I wrote down, was having someone who could talk about healthcare rights and access, and particularly, I think it'd be great to hear from someone from Santa Paula slash Ventura County Medical Center regarding the emergency room, and just what are patients' rights when it comes to the emergency room? I've heard, unfortunately, stories of people not, not utilizing the ER, not utilizing the local clinic. So if we can reach out to particularly, I want to say, emergency room, and it'd be great if we heard from our local clinic as well, you know, sort of what, you know, what are patients' rights? Where do they have a safe space in the medical healthcare environment? That would be great. Okay. So going forward, then, do we have direction? I think we're...
I, I, I think so. And so what, what I heard from Carrie, Carrie had, had offered a, or I had, had said that she preferred a, a prerecorded resource workshop with the, with the recommended speakers minus 805 UndocuFund. That was what I, I heard from Carrie. So I, and then I've heard also feedback that, that the council liked the list that was presented, and if so, add a couple to speak to, you know, patients' rights, hospital patients' rights. So, right now, the, I would, I would seek a little bit more clarity, and perhaps for the board maybe to vote on, to make a motion for some specifics, and then to give clearer guidance.
Before we do that, one quick question. Can anyone address the services that are provided by my cop and versus 805? Are there, is it duplication of services? I mean, what, what does 805 provide that my cop does not?
So my cop, my cop, they, they have a really special connection with the indigenous community that, that don't speak Spanish, and so, and I would say 805, there's some, there's certainly some overlap, but they, my cop specifically, they've created over, over a decade, I want to say maybe over 15 years, connections and strong connections with the indigenous communities within Ventura County.
I would say that I would be okay with 805 with the understanding that we let them know that they are providing very specific services, and they're not giving direction on how to circumvent. I don't want to see a roomful of people here and have someone from 805 get up here and start sharing information on how to share information about ICE and where they are, and phone numbers to call. To me, that's complete opposition of what we should be doing as council members.
Okay. And just to be clear, they, they haven't committed yet, but yeah, I mean, it would be great if there was, upon that condition, and we, you know, a staff would have a conversation with their staff in terms of the parameters that the council feels comfortable presenting, and if they were amenable to that, those parameters, we can, we can certainly have that conversation, and then they can say, no, you know what, we choose not to, or they can say, sure, we can do that, and we will, we'll respect the council's wishes. So we can have that, that conversation, and we'll make sure that if, if that's the council's guidance, that we will give those, them those parameters.
May I like to make a motion with Carrie's language included? That we have an in-person forum, as long as something online?
Hybrid.
Yeah, hybrid workshop with these listed speakers, and with the, as well as 805 UndocuFund, with like what Carrie mentioned.
Got you.
Can I ask you a clarification on your motion? Does that include reaching out to a, potentially the speakers are on healthcare?
Yes, of course, yes.
Okay.
I think that's very important.
Okay.
That's clear.
Okay. All right, you have support there? You have support for this moving forward with his motion? Okay, so we have a first and a second, I guess we're making a motion out of it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, we have, we have direction. We have direction, okay, thank you, everyone.
One thing I will add, and I apologize for not mentioning it in my report, I think what we'd like to do is to target an event in late September, maybe the last week of September, and I'd just like for that flexibility to be able to select a date that's, that's, that the speakers are gonna be able to, you know, work with. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, that was our, oops, that was our last business item, and now we move on to our city manager's verbal report.
All right, so I'll try to keep it quick here. Gotta turn that on, okay. Yeah, that's me. So I'll try to keep this quick. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on the GIS work that was mentioned, there's a lot of great work with the GIS, and that was, these are your ARPA funds at work, wanted to mention that. Public Works, they're gonna be using an application called PSD Citywide, and, and also to, to let you know that they are finalizing their work on creating that, the pothole application. So if that wasn't clear, I just wanted to, to make sure that that was clear to you, and we'll provide subsequent updates to the council to let, you know, where we are with that, especially the pothole update. We know that that was a priority for the council. In terms of the Highway 126 and safety improvements, I was able to speak to that, so I'll be, I'll be working on that, and as Councilmember Brogie had asked, providing regular updates. What I will say is, you know, there's, hopefully there's gonna be some low-hanging fruit that we can go after and stuff that we can get in the short term, but some, some, some of these, you know, safety improvements are gonna be mid-range and, and long-term, so. And Councilmember Garnica, thank you for giving us an update on the Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee, the work that you guys, that you're all doing there, yourself and Albert, and then thank you to Mayor Viasenior for stepping in and participating in our first roundtable meeting. And it was very well-received, as you said, John, and we were able to, to get some of the, get some, some initial steps taken care of, and we look forward to our next meeting at Red Engine Brewery. And we are looking at, as part of that, we're looking at partnering with some of the downtown businesses at potentially developing some, some large wayfinding signs along the highway to replace some of those that have been damaged over time. So we're gonna be meeting with a couple of the downtown business owners who've, who've got a design and have some, some good ideas in, in mind. So we'll update you on how that goes. We also have our Business Spotlight program that myself, Angel, and our city clerk, Olivia, are working on, working really hard on right now. What we're, what we're trying to develop is a, is a list of businesses that would be eligible, and then have a, a means by which they can apply and submit an application, and, and we will be able to, to administer fairly. And so that's, that's what we're working on now, and we hope to begin that within the next month or so. So a lot of great work happening there. We got guidance that, you know, a comprehensive wayfinding sign program is, is really needed, and we, we've noticed, we may not have the funds in our, in our budget to do that, however, oftentimes there are grant resources, and perhaps if we can in the future allocate some funds there, maybe we can get a grant that we can, we can match some funds and, and get that going. That's gonna be really important, that we do that with a well-planned effort. So I wanted to mention that. And one of the things that the businesses really asked for was somewhat of a simple ask, but, you know, an implementation can be a little difficult, and that was to help increase foot traffic and bring more people to downtown to patronize the businesses there. So as we continue to work with, with this committee, I think that we should keep that front and center in, in terms of our efforts. Just want to speak a little bit to the, the power outages that occurred this weekend. They were, there was an outage that occurred Sunday morning, was it Sunday morning? Did I get that right? That was Sunday morning? Was it Saturday? Yeah, it was a Saturday morning. Yes, it was Sunday morning where a tree branch had, had fallen on a residential home and took out some, some power to several homes, and then as a result of some of the work to get that power back, and when, when, when power was re-energized, it resulted in a subsequent loss of power in the evening. So that was, that was very unfortunate. However, you know, Southern California Edison was able to, over the next 12 to 16 hours or so, return power to, to everyone that was affected. So we are also, I also got word from our now former Southern California Edison liaison, and that was Natalie Yanez, that we will be having a new liaison, and his name is Ian Anderson. And so hopefully we'll be able to invite him over to the council meeting and give you an opportunity to meet him. As far as the canyon fire is concerned, it's 97% contained, and yes, you're probably aware of, Incident Command was set up here at the city of Fillmore at Two Rivers Park. They were, they, they were set up in front of Two Rivers Park between C and D Street, and they, they really kept the, the command center to our parking areas, and also to, to a property owned by Bill Morris, which is across the street. And thank you to, to Bill Morris for being such a great partner, and, and allowing, you know, our, our Incident Command to be, to be set up on his property as well. As far as, you know, Dolores, there's, there's a lot of work happening with the, the installation of the new Dolores Day bathrooms. So, you know, concrete work occurred, formwork occurred on Friday. They should have poured concrete today, with cleanup occurring tomorrow, and final inspection for, for Wednesday, and then a notice of completion coming back to city council at our next meeting on August 26th. And as far as our ERF grant, our homeless encampment grant, we did have a tour of the river bottom. Thank you very much to our chief, Malagon, for coordinating that and having the homeless liaison come out and provide a tour for staff, and, and also the service provider that we're looking to work with, Turning Point Foundation, to, to visit the encampments, make contact with the residents down there. The one thing that I really enjoyed seeing was the, the actual relationships and the respect that, that the homeless liaison unit has been able to, to kind of foster down there in, in the homeless encampment. So we're hopeful that that leads to a cooperative relationship and with, relationships with our case managers when, when we start that. And we hope to, to, to have a contract in place and, and work begin, hopefully at the latest by October 1st, if not sooner. And I'll be providing you updates on the progress of that as it comes along. Positive news, and I've been updating you in private meetings, we are working with the Ventura County Healthcare Agency to formalize an agreement where they would allow us to use office space at the clinic off of Highway 126, which brings us a lot closer to the encampment, and also gives, hopefully, our case managers private space to meet with the clients, and then an increased relationship with the services that the healthcare agency provides and helps us, helps us out with our overall mission. So we're very happy about that. Mayor mentioned the Get Up, Get the Scoop event, August 14th at 3:00 PM. Please come out and have all your questions answered by staff and council members. I'll be there, too, so we'll leave you hanging on that one. So our summer, our summer music series is getting ready to kick off on August 15th with the Danny Torres Band out of Piru. And I want to thank all the volunteers that have made this happen, the members of our Cultural Arts and Recreation Committee that have helped put this together, and I think are performing in it in one of those days. We are actually gonna have a member, a booth- We are actually going to have a member, a booth set up at the, one of the dates, actually September 21st, let's see, no, is it, on September 12th. So VCTC is going to set up a booth to get public feedback and give public information on the Santa Paula Branch Line Trail Master Plan Update that's taking place. So be on the lookout if you're, you know, curious about the work that's taking place on the, with the Santa Paula Branch Line Trail Master Plan Update. Let's see, Sesprey Bridge Repair, as far as I can, I was able to find out, is still on course to be completed by the late October, early November timeframe, and so I'll continue to give you updates on that. So from what I understand, that we're still on target for an October, late October completion. Want to thank the Fillmore Lions Club for inviting the city to come out to a food distribution last week, and to the city staff members that participated. I know Angel was able to get out there, Juana, Amanda, Jackie, we had Adeli head out there, and Inez, and if I left out any staff members that took their own personal time after work to help out with that, please thank you very much for doing so. Also, thank you for the Love Project and Friends of the Field Workers. Let's see, I also had an opportunity to attend Soccer Fest with ASO, and that was a lot of fun, and they're super excited about the work that you've done in prioritizing repairing their fields and adding lights, so they're so appreciative, and I was happy to go down there and enjoy that day with them last Saturday. And early registration for basketball has begun, so get in early, get your kids registered, and we're also looking for referees, gym managers, and coaches. Please, we always need coaches, so get registered early and often. Okay, so that's it for my manager update. There's a lot there, and thank you so much for everything that you do, council.
Thank you. Thank you, Manny. And just to reiterate what someone said earlier, even though it was summertime, it sure has been busy. I think Adeli said that, so you just highlighted everything that's going on, so thank you very much. Okay, all right. Now we are actually moving into closed session. We do have, let me just get it here on my agenda, actually, not sure if I have it. I'm sorry? Okay, we are moving into closed session. We do have exposure to litigation in a new case, so we will be during the closed session right now. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. We are back from our closed session item. The City Council was updated on the threats of litigation, asked questions, there is no reportable action. With respect to a third item, the City Council approved an agreement to require bonds for the remaining public improvements to be constructed in exchange for the city agreeing to issue permits for this particular project. And with that, we will have adjournment and I will adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, August 26th here at City Hall. Thank you everyone, meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful night.